Hello. This meeting of the Stafford Board of Supervisors is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bumpke.
Here.
Mr. Cavalier.
Here.
Mrs. Mauer.
Here.
Mr. Milde.
Here.
Ms. Sellers.
Here.
Mr. Snellings.
Here.
And Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. So, good afternoon and thanks for joining us here in at home. My name is Paul Milde. I represent the Aquia District on the Board of Supervisors. I have a couple of quick, I want to, things I want to talk about. We launched the Pulse Point app this Saturday with a CPR flash mob at the Target Stafford Marketplace, at Stafford Marketplace. Gary was there and Laura was there. It's an interesting thing to see, it looked like 50 or so people, a flash mob giving CPR to a mannequin, half of a mannequin, all over the store at Target. So, imagine you were a, if you were a consumer there, a customer walking around, all of a sudden, Staying Alive comes on the, that Staying Alive by the Bee Gees is the song they like to do CPR to. And that comes on and you have 50 people throughout the store giving CPR to a mannequin. It was pretty neat. So, we did a flash mob and if you haven't downloaded the Pulse Point app yet, it's very easy to do on your phone. You just go to the App Store and look up Pulse Point and that will connect you with people who know how to do hands-only CPR and also help you find, locate AED defibrillators. So, take an opportunity to do that and also a few minutes to learn hands-only CPR. It's simple. I learned it and so it must not be that difficult. I did it in a few minutes, a couple of months ago. So, and thank you Stafford Hospital. They've been a great partner along with Gwyneth's Gifts, Gift, helping keep Stafford safe. Also, there's a VDOT Pardon Hour Dust Meeting. As you, many of you know, you couldn't miss it now. VDOT is Winding Courthouse Road to Four Lanes with us, it's actually part VDOT and part Stafford, from the Stafford Hospital Boulevard all the way over to Winding Creek, along with our new diverging Diamond Interchange, about a $200 million project. The Pardon Hour Dust Meeting will be held Wednesday, May 17th, from 6:00 until 8:00 PM at Colonial Forge High School, if you want to learn more about that. VDOT's making a huge effort to make sure people understand, folks understand how this works and how the construction's going to affect our local traffic. It's a three-year project, so you're going to be living with this for a while. Don't hesitate to give us a call if you have any questions. And with that, I'm going to get into the really neat stuff, the proclamation presentation, citizens volunteers. You know, one of our greatest resources here is our citizen volunteers. They do everything from greeting folks at the reception desk when you come in, you'll always see someone there smiling and that's a volunteer. Coaching children, directing traffic for the sheriff's office and saving lives with fire and rescue. Last year, their time added up to more than 33,000 volunteer hours, which is worth about a million dollars in wages. That's a million dollars in taxpayers' money that was saved and it's an amazing thing. So, today I'll ask you to join me, I'm going to ask you guys to all join me down front so we can honor you with a proclamation. Is, Marsha? Should I just start reading these names off and then people will come up as I?
Jeff Shover is here and he'll be the first to tell.
Okay. Wonderful. So, in particular, I'm going to, I'd like to honor the volunteers who have had more than 200 hours of service over the last couple of years, last year. Anita Dodd, who's always on the list, managed to get, still break 200 at 202 hours. Doris McAdams, 243 and a half hours. Yeah, come, I guess come on down as I call your name. Carol King, 254 and a half hours. Robert Podlesny.
Podlesny.
Podlesny, sorry, 257.1 hours. Valerie Hart, 264.5 hours. Donald Brennan, 277.5 hours. William Smith, 284 hours. Jane Connor, 287 hours. David Kwiatkowski.
Kwiatkowski.
Kwiatkowski, 383, I'm sorry, I'm destroying names here, 383.25 hours. Cecilia Miller is 443.75 hours. Kenneth Adams, 500 hours even. Pat Riddelmelsner, 621 hours. Charlotte Crisman, 787 hours. Thomas Kumunsis, 826.5 hours. Melissa Habayeb, 832 and a half hours. Mark Seymour, here's a big one, 1,273 hours, 73 and a half hours. And Nick Kapczynski, 1,823 volunteer hours. So, I'm going to get, 823.
1,823.
Yeah, 1,823.
That's like a full-time job.
That's right.
Good job.
There's this, this is on the list.
So, are we going to turn? Yeah, you want to come on? Yeah. You want to look at it? Well, I'll come do it.
My step-by-step, I should. No, I'm not.
So, this is a pro, this is a proclamation recognizing Stafford County's citizen volunteers. Whereas, one foundation of a decent and just society is the willingness of people to work together for the common good through volunteers mobilized to help those experiencing a variety of problems or issues, to give their time to recreational and cultural programs and historic preservation, and to contribute their expertise to local government services. And whereas, citizen assistance volunteers provide switchboard, reception and Oms Budsmann services at the George L. Gordon Jr. Government Center, and in the past year have responded to more than 100,000 requests. And whereas, this year, citizen assistance volunteer teams donated more than 34,000 hours, 34,000 hours of service in response to requests by providing data entry support, traffic and transportation services in the sheriff's office, clerical and reception services in the circuit and general district courts and other offices as needed, in addition to providing immediate response and assistance during local weather events. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 16th day of May, 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize all citizen volunteers in Stafford County. Thank you so much for what you do to the county. You guys are fixtures here and we really appreciate it.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Shover and I am the manager of our Citizens Assistance and Volunteer Services Office. And I have the fortunate task of having the best job in Stafford County. Since I was a young man, around 16-years-old, I have worked in this organization as a seasonal employee, through my college days as a part-time employee, and then I had the fortunate circumstance to be here in my 23rd year of full-time employment. And every day of those 23 years that I've worked here, I've had the honor and the privilege to work with such great volunteers. It, I can't tell you how much it means to me to work with such people that are dedicated to their community, that give back thousands of hours every week, and just for the satisfaction of knowing that they can make their community that much better. And it's a beautiful thing. We have wonderful, wonderful people here in, excuse me, in Stafford County. And, I was close, what now? In Stafford County. And I would really, really appreciate it if, one more time, if we could just give these wonderful volunteers, whether they're behind me, in the audience, whether they couldn't be here for some reason or another, they're probably working right now behind the scenes. So, if we could, one more time, just give them a wonderful ovation and a big hand for all the work they do. Thank you.
34,000 volunteer hours. Okay. Now, we're going to do a proclamation presentation for Emergency Medical Services Week. Next week, we will, next week, next we will, President, proclamation honoring Emergency Medical Services Week. Our EMS providers are invaluable to our mission to keep Stafford safe. Thank you to all our career and volunteer fire and rescue personnel for their dedication and expertise in caring for Stafford's citizens. Today, we have with us Deputy Chief of EMS Operations, Lori Knowles. Right? Yep. Assistant Fire and EMS Chief, Joe Granger. Paramedic EMS Station 8, Jim Vitale, Valetti? Vitaletti? Vitaletti, right? Am I getting that right? All right. Technician 2, Scott Strain. Technician 1, Joseph Young. Rescue Chief Ben Raines. President of Stafford Rescue Squad, Brian Rock. And Rescue Chief of Stafford Rescue Squad, Bruce Marshall. Thank you all for coming today. And Laura is going to read the proclamation.
Okay, this is a proclamation, maybe, a proclamation recognizing May 21st through May 27th, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week in Stafford County. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas, members of Stafford County's Fire and Rescue Emergency Medical Service Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education each year to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of emergency room physicians, emergency room nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating a week in their honor. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 16th day of May, 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize Emergency Medical Services Week, May 21st through 27th, 2017, in Stafford County.
Chief, or Lori, do you want to say anything?
Sure.
Grab that mic.
Thank you all very much for the proclamation to recognize EMS Week. Emergency Medical Services is a full-time responsibility of the Fire and Rescue Department here in Stafford, and it is a core component of what we do every single day. It takes the men and women of the EMS system to make it work. We appreciate the support of county administration and the Board of Supervisors, but the true recognition for this week should go to the folks that are riding ambulances and medic units every single day in Stafford County because they are truly making a difference for us. So, thank you all very, very much.
Thank you, guys. Well, that brings us to our presentations by the public. So, next we'll have, you'll have an opportunity to come down. I don't have any speaker cards. You'll have an opportunity to come before the board with three minutes to speak. You'll state your name and your address and please direct your comments to the board. And when the yellow light comes on, you're two minutes into your three minutes, and when the red light comes on, you are finished, you should be finished speaking. And with that, I will open the chamber up to anyone that would like to address the On any topic other than what's on for public hearing this evening, which is, I can't remember what's on there.
Paul Wodowski, Stafford, Virginia. I see you. I think everyone knows my address. Whereas, this is Armed Forces Week. Tomorrow, I'll see you at Mission Barbecue. The Air Force gets a free sandwich on 6:10. You can ride by and you can see all the delegate signs that are out there. Pick one of the three. You never know what you're going to get. They all been chairman, and I still don't get a county water and sewer bill. Simply amazing. Ride through the county and look at these subdivisions, the ones that are approved with 90 houses. Still not fully developed. They're still reaching out, trying to fill in all these $400,000 houses. Good luck. It was good to see the volunteer with the most hours. His name ended with S-K-I. That's, means he's got skills, knowledge, and imagination. Golly, can you imagine that? I expect the proclamation for all the volunteer three-minute speeches that I've given through the last 27 years to this board, which is all in vain, and that's why I warn each of you as citizens, be wary of when you go to the voters booth in 2017. Whoever you put on this board is going to be part of the 2020 census. And the county is gerrymandered. It's got seven distinct supervisors, and it should only have six. And we should have a member-at-large because they all go in the back room and eventually, if you live long enough, maybe even if you serve three terms, you might become chairman. Who knows? It's just an amazing concept. We live in a democracy and yet we still have people who are on the board who didn't even get 50% of the vote. And that goes to the school board, too, who just did another amazing gerrymandering job of redistricting. It just fascinates me every day to see what's going on. And the last time I was here, it was stated that if I speak at this one, I can't speak at the one at the 7:00 PM. Well, two weeks ago, you didn't even have a 7:00 PM because you're outspending taxpayer money, socializing with your subsidized planning commissioners, who, by the way, you approve 10K per year. And what do they do? They just do what you want and you just rubber stamp everything like you've always have. Golly, can't wait till I sell my Griffiths Whitewater property because I'm going to make Stafford great again.
Thank you, Mr. Wodowski. Would anyone else in the chambers like to come address the board? You look like you're going to do it. Okay.
Martha Newton. I live at 138 Green Bank Road. I would like to talk about the signs that are put, put up on the road. When you come to the stop sign at, let's see if I get this road right. Celebrate Virginia and the cross street, I can't think of it. When you come out of Green Bank Road where the animal hospital is, and you make a right and you come to that stop sign, when you have to look to the left, you can't always see the traffic because these signs for Dell Homes or whatever homes there are, they're always lined up there. And so, it's hard, if you're short like me, it's hard to see down the road, which it could be a traffic hazard, which I know there have been several traffic accidents there at that intersection. But, just for your information. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board? All right. We'll close that part of the agenda and bring it back to the board for their comments and committee reports.
Ms. Bumpke.
Thank you. We had an OPEB meeting this morning, and that's a quarterly meeting, and OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, and this is to keep money secure for other post-employment benefits for county employees. And just wanted to let everybody know, we had our highest quarterly earnings for the last four years, and the account is doing well. Just, I haven't given you this value before, but we started at 3.2 million in 2014, and we're now at five, almost, well, five and a half million dollars. So, it's about a 10% return. We had a ribbon cutting this past, well, Mr. Thomas will report on this as well, at Six Bears and a Goat, Supervisor Snellings and Mr. Thomas and I were there, and it's a new brewery up off of Route 17, but they're also serving food, wine, and other beverages. So, if you're interested in trying out a new restaurant, definitely give that one a call, a try. I attended the Stafford Coral Society Annual Event at Riverside Dinner Theater. It was spectacular. And then also, the Stafford England Friendship Association Tea was just held this past week at Belmont, and that was another delightful event. I wanted to let the board know, I am on the GMAC Committee, which is Government and Military Affairs Council, which is part of the Chamber of Commerce. Wanted to let you know, we've elected our new chairman, who is Gerald Childress, from the Childress Agency. We wrote our vision and mission statements, and we've assigned committees and committee chairs. We're making progress. And if any of you are interested, I'd be more than happy to share with you our vision and mission statements so you can weigh in. It's obviously not cast in stone at this point in time. I attended a Clearview Heights Civic Association meeting. We talked about a lot of stormwater issues in the district, some speeding concerns and road repairs, most of which I'm working with VDOT and the Sheriff's Department on. We also had a GWRC meeting yesterday, and we have currently, this is an impressive number, 622 enrolled vans in this region. 622 vans. That's a lot of vans, and that's taken a lot of people off of Highway 95. This represents 48% of the entire pot of money that is farmed out for van pools. So, we represent about 48% of that, of that group of vans for Northern Virginia and the Prince William Transportation Commission. And then there's kind of another group called the other category, which includes Culpeper and some other more rural areas. Last night also, my last thing is, we had a FAMPO meeting. We have completed Phase 1 of the 2016 study, and that was looking at exit 143 all the way down to 126. And last night, we actually approved the Phase 2 funding, which includes an entire comprehensive study looking at exit 143 all the way down to exit 110. So, it includes a number of additional exits. And this is going to be a more complex and comprehensive phasing than what we did in Phase 1. The next thing is, there is going to be some discussion with board members and the community regarding whether or not we, our board and the community, are interested in setting up a transportation authority. So, it would be a way in which we could raise money. It would be for additional taxes, and it would be a way that we could leverage our dollars to get more money through the smart-scale process. But, there will be more information on that to come in the next several months. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier.
Just a few quick items. I attended the annual Stonebridge HOA meeting a couple Saturdays ago, where they cleared it up just long enough because it was an outdoor event, so that was nice. And the Aquia Harbor Yacht Club's annual blessing of the fleet, along with Mr. Thomas and Mr. Milde, that was a beautiful day there, and got to be down on the marina, so that went very well. And last but not least, the Quantico Innovation Center had an open house, and they had some visitors, VIPs, Republican gubernatorial candidate Ed Gillespie met with us before the event, and then Congressman Whitman was there as the keynote speaker in the afternoon, or in the afternoon event, and it drew quite a crowd, and I'm hoping that we can actually turn the corner there and make that center a reality. It's a reality now, but it just needs to ramp up a little bit more. So, we're in good shape, but moving slowly. Thank you.
Mrs. Mauer.
A couple of items. Attended the Workforce Development Board meeting down in, in, oh, gosh, Southern Virginia. I can't even, Cape Charles, that's where it was. And this is an organization, a board that I sit on to help distribute the funds or utilize the funds as part of the Workforce Investment and Innovation Act. It was a productive meeting. Learned a lot about our workforce development efforts here in around the area. One of the items that they brought up is that these kids who are coming out of high school who might not be going on to college, there are a lot of services out there for them to get them into some of these technical fields, but there seems to be a disconnect with partnership with our school division. And one of the items that they're going to have to do as part of federal legislation is they're going to have to have an elected officials board. So, I will probably be coming off the main committee, going on the elected officials board, and I made the recommendation that we also invite school board members to serve on that as well, to help bridge that gap and get those services that are offered from the workforce development agencies in and around the region, to get them in the schools and help market some of the services that they provide. Additionally, I attended the Claxton Logistics Grand Opening. It's Ray Johnson, congratulations to him and his team. They opened the building that is in Quantico Corporate Center. There's a daycare center in there. There's a small restaurant in there, and they're going to do, they're going to do a great job, and very, very excited for that, him, his family. And it was wonderful to attend that and do the ribbon cutting. Also, attended with several of my colleagues on the board, the Quantico Innovation Center Grand Opening, and I wanted to congratulate the Quik Board on a successful grand opening. They had twice as many people show up as they had RSVP, and that's always a good sign. And wanted to thank Marine, Marine General Berlakis and his wife for their wonderful invitation to the Eighth and I Parade up in Washington DC. Unfortunately, the rain rained us out, but they did have a lovely ceremony and, and a reception for everyone. So, you still got the pomp and circumstance and you still got the feeling. If you ever have an opportunity to attend the Eighth and I, it's really a sight to behold and one that one should never miss. And the tickets are free and you can get them online. And finally, I want to clarify a statement by one of my colleagues. It was reported that we are no longer entertaining rezonings. That is inaccurate, as evidenced by the several applications that we are still receiving in our planning department. Additionally, the Winding Creek rezoning will be coming back to the board, I believe, next month. And secondly, there has been no official decision made by this board to no longer negotiate rezonings, nor was I a party to any unofficial decision. I will say that the proffer bill does limit our ability to meet with applicants, which is an unfortunate, unfortunate consequence of this bill, but this board has not made a decision to, to not negotiate rezonings. And that concludes my remarks, and thank you very much.
Ms. Sellers.
First, I attended the school board meeting last week. North Stafford has a new principal, Mr. Hornick. He's been there for quite a while as the assistant principal, and somebody, much of the North Stafford community was very happy to hear, so went out there and supported him, and we're pretty excited to have him on board. The Sheriff's Department did their take-back event, and they received 500 pounds of prescription medication, and it's a one-day event. Right after they hosted that, they won an award or were awarded a CVS Dropbox where they will now be accepting prescription medications at the Public Safety Building. You can put it in a lockbox, and then they'll dispose of it. So, they have received that, and we'll just be putting that into action. Earlier today, I got the invitation from Fire and Rescue, and they're doing a lot of really good things. Mission Barbecue donated $6,000, $6,015 to their Operation Warm, which is the Coats for Kids event that we, many of us have been a part of in the fall. So, that's a ton of coats for a ton of kids here in Stafford County, and want to thank Mission Barbecue for being a great partner to the community, in particular, Fire and Rescue. I also want to draw folks' attention, if you guys haven't been in the Mission Barbecue, when you go in the, into the restaurant, as you're going back to the bathroom, along the wall, there is an American flag made from a fire hose that Station 9's folks put together. Stop by and look at it. It's really, really neat, and they call it their wall, so they have lots of their pictures there, and just a really neat item that they keep there. Finally, I attended and participated in the opioid forum hosted by Mary Washington Hospital and the RACS B last week. and the RACS B last week. We're continuing those discussions, as I think we're at about 21, 22 deaths this year here in Stafford County from overdoses. So the region is taking a hardcore look at this. Doctors from across the region were there. Officials throughout the region, our sheriff was there. A great turnout, great conversations, and we will continue that. And then two events coming up. Friday, Operation Finally Home will move in the family there in Embry Mill, 10:45. If you guys could be there, please come out. It'll be a great event. And next week, on the 25th, we'll be hosting a community meeting at Winding Creek Elementary to discuss the Winding Creek rezoning one last time with the community before we bring it back to the board.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mrs. Newton, I want to thank you for bringing that to my attention on the signs. I'll handle those signs there this week, take care of that for you. A lot of things going on Route 17. As already been mentioned, Six Bears and a Goat opened a great restaurant. I was up there a couple weeks ago to the grand opening. Not in my district, but within Rockthorn. So if you're up that way, it's behind Chick-fil-A on Route 17. I think you'll really enjoy it. We've got a lot of stuff going on. We've got a farmer's market opening this Wednesday, tomorrow, 3 o'clock, University of Mary Washington, Route 17 campus next to Walmart. That'll be right in their parking lot. And this is a farmer's market that's well-established in other areas, and they'll be there every Wednesday from 3 to 6, at least initially, and hopefully they'll be able to expand that. And finally, we've got our IHOP has announced that they will open at the corner of Sanford and Route 17 on June the 9th. I'm getting a lot of questions on that. They've, I don't know what the issue's been, but it's taken us some time to get there, but they are now committed to June the 9th. So I'm looking forward to some really good IHOP pancakes. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. We had a PRTC meeting. The new executive director, Dr. Bob Schneider, is really off to a great start. One of the reasons the executive committee unanimously chose him to be recommended to the board was he's been at systems who've had funding deficits, kind of like Prince William is facing now. So he's been there, and he's bringing that experience to us, and he's kind of breathed new life into the strategic planning process, which we have to have a plan to get out of this and take us into the next 10 years. So I think we're going to see a lot of good things out of Dr. Bob, as I call him. Also attended the Regional Library Board meeting. Happy to report that all the localities this year are fully funded. I know this board has had issues sometimes, that that doesn't always happen, but this year, every locality fully funded the budget. And the city of Fredericksburg has actually really stepped up this year. We are taking the library admin out of the headquarters branch and expanding the library there a little bit more, and we have a different location. So the city of Fredericksburg is throwing $250,000 in to help us with the parking lot, and they're also taking over maintenance of the headquarters library, similar to what Stafford County already does. So Carrie Devine represents the city on the board. She did a really good job advocating for that. And then lastly, again, the Six Bears and a Goat. When Meg Bomke and I went to this location back when it was a kind of an industrial place, I kind of scratched my head a little bit, and I didn't really see the vision. But when I walked in the front door of that place, I was literally blown away. I know out in that neck of the woods, Mr. Snellings and I hear from people, they want restaurants, but they don't want chain restaurants. If you go to this place, I think you're going to find that they have really helped us answer the call. It is top-notch food. The service is really great, even on their first full day open, their staff was ready to go. So please take a visit out there. The more we support businesses like that, the more they can grow into other ones, and then we'll have great offerings. So that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Millday?
Thank you. Yeah, I made it to the Six Bears and a Goat. The week before, they had a full menu, it was a limited, very limited menu, but their food is from Foodie and Mercantile. That's the same, that's the kind of food you're going to get there, and it's amazing. So I had to drink beer instead of eat, unfortunately. It was, I thought I didn't have any choice. But I stopped by for lunch, we just checked the place out. The Quick, the Quick event was the best one we've had yet. We've had some big events. We had a real big one once. I mean, I think, but I think this one was probably the best, most exciting event we've done for Quick. We had one, had one four or five years ago. But this really makes you feel like things are happening finally with this project that we've been working on for a very long time. I got, I was called to a meeting with VDOT to, and this also came up last night in our FAMPO meeting, to tell us about the new bridge crossing the Rappahannock River, the southbound bridge. So quickly, I'm going to tell you the great news that you're going to see over the, as they roll it out. They haven't rolled it out officially yet, but their new design for crossing the Rappahannock southbound, instead of the two lanes we were told we would get, this is part of the smart scale application that was, that we were awarded. Instead of two lane, new lanes, will be three new lanes, and they'll be in between the two existing bridges on 95, and you will bypass 17, the rest area, and Route 3. So as you're heading south, you will kind of, you know, I'm sure you won't even feel it, you'll stay to the left if you don't want to get off at any one of those three stops on one of the three lanes, and then the hot lanes will have ended before that. And then the, you'll, if you want to get off at 17, or the rest area, or Route 3, you'll have to stay to the right on the existing lane. So it's a really nice design, and they've managed to do it at the same, with the same budget. That's obviously the driving factor, so it's exciting. I can't wait for them to show everyone what they showed us last night, the actual sketches of what they're going to do. I'm happy to report that Crowsnest will be the fourth county in Virginia to be included in the Old Growth Forest Network. The goal of the network is to include one forested area in each county in the United States that will never be developed. Crowsnest will be our area, 3,000 acres of natural habitat and old growth forest that is safe from development. If you want more information on this, www-oldgrowthforest.net. And more information will be coming out. They're going to have some type of a ceremony, and hopefully invite the right people this time. Another really neat thing, two things that happened that came together, and I mean it was a coincidence, we were lucky. The wounded walk. Last week, we had the privilege of having three young veterans visit us who were doing their wounded walk. And the wounded walk was from Camp Lejeune all the way to Arlington Cemetery. One of the walkers had lost a brother to Pete, who had committed suicide after serving. This was obviously to raise awareness for suicide in veterans and the issues that wounded veterans face, wounded in many ways. Brandon Powell, Bryce Young, and Michael Birdsong walked from Camp Lejeune to Arlington Cemetery to his brother's grave. So these three, these three men were impressive. We, a lot of us met them at the Armed Services Memorial that's under construction, and they are just, they had a following, they were escorted all the way to the courthouse. But coincidentally, the National Day of Prayer was happening here, too, where we already had an event planned for the front of the courthouse on the courthouse steps, where one of our local churches was reading, was praying, doing a lot of praying, and we were, a lot of us were invited. Well, these three men joined the, joined the Day of Prayer. They kind of walked up halfway through it. And this group of people, a lot of county staff, a lot of people from the church, and just other interested people that wanted to be a part of it, they laid hands on these three guys. And I, and I was thinking, well, you don't, we don't really know these, we didn't know the religious background of any of these men. That was nothing that we could know. It was, and so everyone prayed on them, and it was amazingly, it was moving. They were all, there was, there were a lot of not dry eyes, including with those men, and they obviously received it well. I think it was, it was profound, and a lot of people saw that. But it was really amazing to have those two things come together on our courthouse steps. And I just, you can't really describe it, that's the best I can do. But if you know a veteran who is struggling, please reach out. And with that, I'll turn it over to our county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I'll defer any comments. Thank you very much.
How about a report from Tom Foley, our county administrator?
Mr. Chairman, just a quick note, wanted you all to know that the first formalized county school staff team on shared services is actually meeting tomorrow in preparation for the Joint Board and Schools Working Group Committee that meets next week. They will be making some final recommendations on the joint CIP process, and also bringing forward a list of priorities from staff on moving forward with other items in terms of shared services. Obviously, a few things have been done in the past. The healthcare program is one example. But this is the first formalized process with the two staffs to bring some things forward to that joint working group. So some good progress moving forward, just wanted you to be aware of. Also, just a reminder, the new deputy, Fred Presley, will be starting on the 30th of this month. We'll introduce him to you on the 6th at your next meeting. And with that, I would just introduce Chris Rapp and Chris Hoppy to give you the construction report.
Mistress Cavalier?
One question first. Charlie, you mentioned about the shared services meeting, and I didn't see that on the Joint Schools Working Group agenda for Monday. Is there going to be an update on that?
There will be. I've asked them to put that back on. I think it was oversight.
Add that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Oh, Ms. Bomke, sorry, Chris.
Mr. Foley, could you please give the public just kind of a quick management summary on the Fire and Rescue report?
Yes, ma'am. The assessment of the fire rescue system has been underway for a number of months. That was to look at the system overall, the relationship with, between volunteer and paid staff, and some of the policies and procedures we have in place. The study did a full assessment of the system. The report was issued in April, and the Public Safety Committee reviewed that report today. As a part of that report, a group of volunteer and career staff got together and talked about how we might move forward in bringing about improvements to the system, in particular in a much more collaborative way between paid staff and volunteers. And one of the major recommendations that was that we put a strategic plan together, where we take a step back and look at the system overall, and think about a vision for the future, and some goals and objectives that will move us forward in addressing some of the recommendations in that report. In addition to that, that, some group within the system, which will, is yet to be determined, will also put together an immediate action plan on things that we can move forward with right away. So I think a strategic look, as well as an immediate action plan on how we can bring about improvements in the system. I think the key to all of this is that we'll be done in a, in a very collaborative way, where everybody's at the table working together on how we can make this the best combination system in the state of Virginia. So I think a very positive result on how to move forward. There are a lot of important, significant issues in there that need to be addressed, but I think we have started off in a real positive way, in a collaborative way, to address those challenges in the system. We will be reporting back to the board and the Public Safety Committee on a very regular basis about the process of the strategic planning and the immediate actions to address the recommendations of the report.
Any more questions of Mr. Foley? All right, Chris, I think you're up now.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Christopher Rapp, Director of Public Works. I am pleased to provide the following road construction update. We're making progress on Garrisonville Road widening. Branch Highways continues to install storm sewer at night with some light-time lane closures. Most of the utilities have been relocated, including Dominion Virginia Power, Comcast, and Columbia Gas. Verizon is pulling and splicing cable, and they should be done by the end of the month. Following completion of the Verizon work, we should start actual road construction. And also, the memorandum of understanding with the Pence Group has been executed by all parties, and this was for incorporation of the Garrison at Stafford roadwork into the Branch Highways contract, and we're working with Branch Highways to process that change order. The Brook Road safety improvements, that project has been advertised for construction. You can see it on our website. Pre-bid meeting will be this week, and the bid opening will be June 28th. The relocation of the fiber optic conduit continues. Most of the other utility relocations are done. Verizon South is finishing up, removing their old poles. We purchased a stream and restoration, stream restoration and wetland credits, and there's an agenda item on the consent agenda for a ward of a construction engineering and inspection contract to do inspection services on that project. Juggins Road design is underway. The Commonwealth Transportation Board authorized the revenue sharing, and we received confirmation from VDOT to start invoicing for that project. And we will be proceeding on Juggins Road for the utility relocation and right-of-way phase. Poplar Road and Mountain View Road intersection, NOVEC is obtaining a VDOT permit to begin tree clearing, and they'll follow that up with their utility pole relocation. We are scheduling the Verizon relocations, and we also are obtaining quotes to demolish one structure at the intersection. We did some asbestos testing, and we're getting ready to demolish that structure. Wayfinding signs, the current phase of the signs is underway. The signs are being fabricated, and actually, out on site, they're drilling holes and pouring concrete foundations for those signs. That'll continue this summer. Mine Road sidewalk, that construction plan was advertised, and we received two bids for the construction of the sidewalk. We sent that to VDOT for their approval, and we'll be bringing that to the, back to the board in June for a ward. Verizon finished their fiber optic relocation, so the relocations are done on that project. So we're ready to, should be ready to start construction on the sidewalk pretty soon. And lastly, the Armed Services Memorial. As you know, the contractor has started construction. A quick update, they upgraded the site, they're pouring concrete foundations, the water line to the site has been installed, they've installed storm sewer, the memorial bricks have been ordered, and the next step is the contractor will begin forming and pouring the concrete walls. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Who has questions for Christopher? All right. Well, I'm, thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
I'll remind everyone that on the county website is an interactive transportation map. That is amazing. You can click on any of the projects, almost any of the projects that you heard, and certainly most, all the major projects in Stafford County, and you will pull up all the details about that project, the designs, the cost, the timeline. It's a great tool for anyone that's interested in transportation, at least at that level. I believe that brings us to the consent agenda. Nope. Oh, I didn't see you, Chris.
That's fine, not a problem. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Chris Hoppy, interim Assistant Director of Public Works, I'm going to give you an update on parks projects. Embry Mill Phase Two, contractors completed repair of all the soft spots that were on Field Eight that held up progress for so long. So the synthetic turf fields are actively underway, the curbs around the fields and the storm drainage system have all been installed. The stone base is nearly complete on the fields, it should be done by Friday. The synthetic turf carpet should arrive just after Memorial Day for installation going forward. The parking lots have been cut to subgrade elevation, the curbs have been poured. We're expecting stone late this week and some paving next week. We'll do some finished paving a little later after the turf work is complete. The restroom interior has received its final paint, the HVAC and plumbing fixtures and the partitions are being installed right now. That could wrap up within the next two weeks. The monument sign is complete. We've got some messages on it, but we're still working out some bugs and getting the communications to it cleanly, but the inspections are all complete. The indoor scoreboard at the pool at Indoor Recreation Center, we've got the contract out to the vendor for signature. The purchase order is waiting to be finalized as soon as that contract come back signed. The delivery date is expected to be June 15th with the installation of the following week. Belmont Ferry Farm Trail Phase Four, staff's addressing comments that we received from the National Park Service for the agreement to come across their land. And that would be the end of my report.
Any questions? Mr. Cavalier?
Maybe I didn't hear. Did you address the Chichester Park scoreboard?
No, I did not. I'm not involved in that, but I understand that is progressing, and it's on an expedited timeframe as well.
Mr. Chairman, that scoreboard is scheduled to be in place by June 30th. That will make sure that we meet the tournaments and the objectives that we'd set out for. We did have to do some expedition on that to move it forward quickly, but we're in good shape to complete that by the time the tournaments are formed.
I appreciate it, and I'm sure, I'm sure the groups are appreciative of us meeting their deadlines. Thank you.
Any other questions? On the Belmont Ferry Farm Trail Phase Four, is that what brings us to the Chatham Bridge?
Yes.
And so what's the timeline on that, of construction, completion?
Well, the construction completion is scheduled for next year. It's the right-of-way process we have to get through before we can proceed to bidding and construction.
But we're funded, and all we need is, the last obstacle is that we don't have any, we don't anticipate a problem with the National Park Service?
No, I was just kind of working through the details of that agreement.
Okay. Thank you. I believe maybe that brings us up to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any items off of the consent agenda? All right, good. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motioned and seconded. Please cash your votes. And you may tally the votes. Want to push it again? There we go. There we go. I'm going to go, there we go, all right? And that passes unanimously. I believe that brings us to item 17, a new business.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, regarding the proposed bylaw changes. On May 9th, the Bylaws Committee met, a committee consisting of Mr. Cavalier and Mr. Snellings, to discuss three changes to the bylaws. And just very quickly, the first is regarding the Order of Business. It simply clarifies at the beginning of the meeting what the final agenda will be, so that if there are any deletions or additions, that's clarified as the meeting starts. Second item is regarding the election of the chairman. It establishes that the chair may not serve two consecutive terms and may not serve in a year. Their seat on the board is up for election regardless of their intent to run for the board. And the third and final item is regarding the consent agenda, and that clarifies that board members will be asked to request removal of any items from the consent agenda during their board comments at the beginning of the meeting. Those three were put forward after discussion on that meeting on May 9th, and members of the committee may want to comment. That's the overview.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I spoke to the county attorney before the meeting today. Normally, obviously, three of these items are new for discussion, but since these are our governing rules for this body only and does not really affect the public, he indicated it wouldn't be a problem if we wanted to vote on these today. So for discussion purposes, I will make a motion to approve the bylaws as submitted by the committee.
So we are going to do this right now?
You want to order, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please.
According to our bylaws, I believe that new business gets introduced, and then it gets brought into old business at a second meeting, so this is only open for discussion unless I'm incorrect on that.
Go ahead, county attorney.
In the discussions that I had, this matter was brought up previously, but as the county administrator said, at the bylaws committee meeting, some additional matters were brought forward, and they're before you today. So you have a carryover item. I think you can legitimately debate whether this is a new business item for discussion or it should have been carried under old business.
Okay.
I think really, the way I would look at it is from a practical standpoint. Yes, the last bylaw you have says that you're supposed to bring it up here, and you come back the next week. But if it's the sense of the board here, there would be tantamount to a suspension of the bylaws, meaning two-thirds, and the board wanted to move forward to adopt all of these recommended changes today, and it's a matter of self-governance that does not really affect the public in any way, and they're not disadvantaged, I would take a practical approach to it as a small governing body, that you could move forward on it if you have the necessary voting majority or two-thirds, supermajority.
I see.
And I-
I defer it out to the board.
Okay, and just for the record, I am supportive of the changes to the bylaws, so.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a problem holding this over till the next meeting. I mean, it's not going to take effect until-
All right, I like that idea better.
So if you want to cross the Ts, dot the Is, I don't have a problem with that. So I withdraw the motion and just leave it open for discussion.
Sounds good.
If I could just maybe elaborate, we did go in with the intention of only discussing the change of order in the agenda, which is pretty fit and dry, but then Gary actually brought up the chairmanship thing for one year, and I thought that that was a good idea. It'll give more opportunities for people to become chairman. It will also limit the chairmanship on years that you're not running for election, which both Gary and I believe that that's a good, a good measure to take here, because sometimes it can become a little political the year that you're chairman, if you're also running for election. And then basically-
We are discussing this item right now, but I think we just agreed that we were going to move it to the next meeting. I don't, I'm so compelled to want to talk about these issues, but if we're going to, and I think we should, move it to the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, it is a discussion item, so in a minimum, if you want to discuss, you can discuss.
Okay, please.
That's what I was doing. And so, and then, let's see, I lost my train of thought.
Sorry.
The consent agenda, basically, I wanted to go back to the old way of doing it, which was during your time for comment, at that time, you brought up any items that you wanted to remove from the agenda, which then gave people more opportunity to think about it and to, for the clerk to pull it from the agenda, and then to have the clean record when we approve the agenda. It's rather than doing it when we get to the consent agenda at the last minute and people pull it, it just makes it a lot more orderly process. So that's just some of the background on what we thought. Nothing is earth-shattering. We're not, you know, changing the world here, but, and it's just amongst the seven of it. There's no, you know, we don't need the public's input, I don't think, on our bylaws at this point.
Mr. Thomas, and then Mrs. Sellers.
I'm not proposing a change, I just want to clarify 3-1, Section D, which talks about the public presentation. Over the last couple of meetings, there's been a little bit of conflicting information. I just want to clarify that we intend to keep it that if you talk in the afternoon, you can talk in the evening. And also, you are allowed to talk about a public hearing that occurs at night during the afternoon.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for correcting me on that, by the way.
Mr. Chairman, I like what the proposed changes to how we choose the chairman and the one-year term. I think it not only allows each of us an opportunity to become chairman, should we choose to be chairman, but it provides us an opportunity to interact more with the employees of Stafford County, because the chairman spends a significantly more, more amount of time in this building, and you get to interact with folks, and they get to see who you are and how you are as a leader, and it is a different perspective. So I'm glad to see those changes. Maybe in the future, there can be some discussions about a rotation, like other counties go to, where it dedicates, I think King George does it, where it dedicates and dictates who is going to be the next chairman. That takes all the politics out of it.
Ms. Bomke?
Yeah, so I agree with most of the changes. I do like the fact that we set the agenda at the very beginning. The one question I have regarding the, and I don't have an issue, so let me go to 1-1B. I don't have an issue with somebody not being chair if it's during an election year. You know, I think that can be something that protects everybody, but that's not a deal-breaker for me. I also don't have an issue if somebody wants, you know, to be, that we are going to rotate the chair, and they can only be chair for one year. My concern is that there seems to be, and the reason I would like to wait and vote at the June meeting on this, this seems to be the one that's very sticky, and since I've been on the board, there's been a lot of discussion. Some of it wasn't in our bylaws. People said, well, it's kind of understood that you can't run for chairmanship if you're running for election. It was kind of understood. Now it's actually in writing. So I would just like to have a little bit more dialogue with everybody about kind of what's been done over the previous years before I vote on it in June. Thank you.
Any more comments? I, well, your timing's great on one of those issues. Thank you for waiting until now. The, I've been, I've been on this board when the chairman has succeeded themselves twice. I didn't, and even though I don't think, Susan Stimson?
Mark.
And Mark?
George Swartz.
George Swartz, and I don't have a problem with it. I think you're risking, in a year when we have four people up for election, that you get four new people, and you're stuck with, your pool, your experience pool is very small. I think, I think you're taking a real risk. I think you guys can trust yourselves to decide, I won't be here, so it won't matter. You can trust yourselves to choose the right chairman each time, even if one serves two years in a row. I just don't think that is a great idea. And I also, of course, I won't miss my opportunity to say, I wish we could, I could have gotten the support to change the way we choose our chairman, and I think it should be elected at large in the county. It should be an at-large position, something like Mr. Bellman used to hold or another way that counties, other counties do, so that, I guess, it is more involved, and you do get to spend a lot more time with staff. Yep?
Just to, not rebuttal, but just to tell you why I believe in a person serving one year. I mean, that worked for 300 years. It worked, and all of a sudden, about 10, about 12 years ago, it was changed. And as a matter of fact, it wasn't that long ago that it was changed. And it was changed, and the reason I don't like, I don't like for a couple of reasons. I think Ms. Sellers made a good point that it doesn't allow people to become chairman. If you think about it, you're only going to have two chairmen through a four-year term, if that's the way you do it. It gives more people the opportunity. The other thing is, a couple of those folks that were chairman two times, I was getting complaints from staff that they got a little dictatorial. I mean, they kind of said, well, you know, I'm chair again, I'm all-powerful, and I don't think we need that. The chairman is a very basic thing. They set the agenda, they control the meetings, and they shake hands and kiss babies on behalf of the county. I mean, they're sort of like a monarchy. They're the head of state, but they don't have any authority, other than the authority given to them by the board. The other reason thing is your comment about at-large, and I know you're very much in favor of that, and I'm very much against it. I'm very much against it for a couple of reasons. Number one, I can't imagine how much money you would have to raise to run at-large. It'd be like running for the House of Delegates, so you're going to cut a lot of people out of the process. But number two, and more importantly to me personally, you'd never have a chairman from South Stafford. It just would not happen, because the population is north. So us folks in South Stafford would never have an opportunity to serve as chair if it was at-large. So that's the reasons I'm against it, and I'll support the bylaw changes on the six.
All right. Since we've been represented in Richmond by southern people from the south often, I don't know if, I think you could probably get an at-large chair from anywhere in the county, but again, I won't be around to talk about this much longer. Mr. Waldowski pointed out, you know, in his own way, that I, I've been, I'm the one that, I guess I would benefit from a change to that policy and making it so people can't serve twice or maybe rotating, but this board decided I wasn't the right guy to be chairman, you know, 11 years in a row, and I don't have, I never questioned their wisdom. That was, that was fine by me. So with that, we'll put this on the next agenda?
Mr. Chairman, also, one of the less significant issues was the agenda.
Yeah, and I forgot to do a-
Pointing out, maybe addition for the record, that item number six and eighteen have been released on the-
Mm-hmm.
And will be carried through.
But, so for the record, we no longer have to vote on the change to the agenda?
Right now, you don't have to do that.
Okay.
Will be forward, deletions and additions will be talked about at the end of the meeting, and then we'll request the board to adjourn and vote to adopt the final agenda, which is standard.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman-
Ms. Mallor?
And again, what I do want to establish for the record, since we voted on the cassette agenda, item six was not part of that vote, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And I just had a recommendation. Mr. Foley, the, right at the end of the county administrator's report, Anthony used to say what the additions and deletions were, and that was a great tool for the chairman to go right into that portion as well, so that's very helpful.
All right.
That can be done, or what bylaws you propose, the chairman can move that up, just so that the chairman can get your vote on the final.
Right. If we don't move it up, though, then-
Mm-hmm. Okay. With that, we're going to read into closed session, vote into closed session. Ms. Bomke?
Whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for, one, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the litigation, litigating posture of the board; two, discussion and consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board; and, three, discussion concerning the terms or scope of a public contract where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board; and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3,7 and 29, such discussions may occur in closed meeting.
Motioned and seconded, please cast your votes. And you may tally the votes when you're ready. And we are in closed session. We will return to at least certify the meeting. I'm ready. I mean, I'm not ready, yeah, I'm ready. All right, guys, we're back in.
Motion to certify.
Second.
Cast your votes. Tally the votes. All right, and we are out of closed session, and no action items, so we will adjourn until 7 o'clock. We're going to go meet with the Historical Commission sometime after 6:00.
The Stafford County Board of Supervisors is called to order. Good evening, thank you for joining us here and at home. It's good to see so many people here that aren't here to give us a piece of their mind. My name is Paul Milde, I represent the Acquahia District, and we're going to have Meg give us a prayer, and Mr. Snellings lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here tonight for our public hearings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our role as elected officials. We pray for wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. We pray for a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. We pray for confidence in what is good and fitting. We pray for a keen thirst for justice and rightness, and we pray for the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Fledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now may I have Anita Dodd, Ken Pitts from the Historical Commission. They're going to be presenting this year's Historic Preservation Awards to DP Newton, Donna Hart, Irma Clifton, and David Barret. If you guys could, and ladies and men could approach the dais, that would be great.
I'm Anita Dodd, the Stafford County Historical Commission Chair, and to coincide with the designation of May as Historic Preservation Month-
Is this on?
Can you hear me? Okay. To coincide with the designation of May as Historic Preservation Month, the Stafford County Historical Commission has established a Historic Preservation Award Program. This program provides an opportunity to recognize individuals, groups, organizations, and businesses for their contributions to the preservation of Stafford County's cultural heritage. It is important to celebrate that heritage and the contributions made by those dedicated to its preservation. The Stafford County Historical Commission is pleased to present our Historic Preservation Awards for the year 2016. Mr. Ken Pitts will present the first one.
DP, will you come up? First award tonight goes to Mr. DP Newton. It's a volunteer award, and it's, DP, it's for the, your efforts in educating the people that come to the museum about the Civil War in Stafford County. I know a lot of you already know, DP, but if you don't, he's normally a real quiet man, but he comes alive when he starts talking about the Civil War, and that's especially true when he's talking to young people. He has said that the building that houses the museum there was once a school, and he wants to keep that, that legacy alive by educating those who come to the museum. He's known and respected not only locally but throughout the country for his knowledge about the implements and armament used by soldiers during the war. His knowledge of the methods some soldiers used to build their shelters is surpassed by none, and no one knows better where the soldiers camped here when they were stationed in the county. It's amazing to watch him explain to the people that come through the museum where their ancestors may have been camped when they were stationed here. And many times, he's either drawing a map, or sometimes even takes them out and shows them where that would have been. So DP, you're a true asset to Stafford County, and I'm proud to give you this award.
Thanks.
Our next award goes to Mr. Don Hart, Virginia Properties Incorporated, and I'm also recognizing Sherman Patrick from Compton and Dooling, who was actually the contact person that I talked to during this project. And with Mr. Hart is Rob Taylor, who is actually of Dutton Associates, who was the archaeological firm that produced the report that we are celebrating this evening. So, the Historic Preservation Award is for the volunteer, voluntarily providing historic structures report for the Mount Jewell House located on Garrisonville Road in the Patriots' Crossing Development. This historic structures report provides valuable information about the physical properties of the dwelling, as well as its ownership through time. As these cultural resources are disappearing from our landscape, it is important to retain this information in order to understand Stafford County's cultural heritage. We thank you for your appreciation of our history. Thank you. Our next recipient is Mrs. Irma Clifton. Irma is receiving our Historic Preservation Volunteer Award. She is being recognized for her efforts in opening Shelton's Cottage to the public. Irma has always been an advocate of historic preservation. This past year, she has worked with Stafford County's Parks and Recreation Department towards providing public access to that building. Parks and Rec has been instrumental in maintaining the 19th-century workman's cottage, and recently giving it a much-needed facelift and securing it from the elements. Irma has provided furnishings that enhance the interpretation of the cottage. She has, and these are her own furnishings, she has researched the history of the building and talked with descendants of those who lived there in order to present a true understanding of the cottage's history. Irma has organized several public openings of the house, providing an opportunity for visitors to experience the everyday, everyday life of the working class of the 19th and early 20th centuries. We thank you for your commitment to your county's cultural heritage. Mr. David Barret is our recipient. David is the director of Gary Melcher's Home and Studio at Belmont. He's receiving the, our Historic Preservation Award for Lifetime Achievement. Since 1990, David, along with his staff, has overseen the completion of many additions and restorations to this unique, early 19th-century estate. Some of these have been the conversion of the Carriage House to a visitor's center, the restoration of Gary Melcher's stone studio, and the addition of the pavilion, restoring of the gardens, the acquisition of the Fanny Roots House, which is the home of a local African-American activist who knew and lived near the Melchers, and the restoration of Belmont's Smokehouse and Cow Barn. His accomplishments at Belmont have made it one of the most treasured places in the area for anyone interested in 19th-century art, gardens, and the community at Falmouth. Tonight, we celebrate these accomplishments and wish you a happy retirement.
Mr. Barret, don't go anywhere. You stay up here, please, for a moment. We'd like to, as you've just heard, Mr. Barret is retiring from Belmont, and we're going to honor him and recognize him and his incredible contributions with a proclamation. And I give you Supervisor Thomas.
I have the honor of giving this proclamation because I'm blessed that your facility's in my district. When somebody's done something for 27 years, it requires you to take some deep breaths before you read this, so. This is a proclamation from the board, recognizing David Barret upon his retirement from Gary Melcher's Homes and Studio at Belmont. Whereas Gary Melcher's Home and Studio at Belmont is a state-owned historic site and art museum located in Stafford County, Virginia, and was the last home of American impressionist painter Gary and his wife Corinne Melchers. And whereas David Barret has served as Director of Belmont since 1990, and whereas Belmont has flourished under Mr. Barret's guidance with an increase in annual visitors from 8,000 in 1990 to 17,000 in 2016, for tours of the house, studio, and gardens, special events, education programs and classes, facility rentals, the museum shop, and hiking trails and tourism information. Whereas Mr. Barret created the Friends of Belmont in 1992 to help provide funding for operations and special projects, including the care of hundreds of works by Gary Melchers and other artists that Corinne Melchers left to the state. And whereas Mr. Barret and his staff gained the Garden Club of Virginia's support in 1994 to restore the grounds and gardens of Corinne Melchers envisioned. And whereas Mr. Barret managed building projects that converted the Melchers' Carriage House into a visitor's center and museum shop in 1995, restored Gary Melcher's stonewalled studio and galleries in 2000, and added the pavilion, a public event space and collection and storage facility, in 2006. Whereas Mr. Barret and his staff helped acquire and preserve the Fanny Roots House, a workingman's cottage where an African-American activist who knew the Melchers lived, and restored Belmont's Smokehouse and Cow Barn. And whereas since 2007, Belmont has served as the official Stafford County Visitor Center, which draws tourists and area residents to the site. And whereas during Mr. Barret's tenure, Belmont has been reaccredited twice by the American Alliance of Museums. And whereas Mr. Barret will retire from his post in June 2017. And whereas the Board of Supervisors recognizes the importance of the impact to tourism for Stafford County, and Mr. Barret's efforts have been greatly boosted the number of visitors to Stafford County. And whereas the Board wishes to acknowledge the efforts and success of Mr. Barret upon his retirement for making Belmont a destination for visitors from around the world. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on the 16th day of May 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize David Barret for his contributions to the citizens of Stafford County.
I'm tired, yeah, after that. Thank you, Bob, and thank you, Supervisors. After 27 years of working with all of you here, plus all of your predecessors, it's been a pleasure to see a county support historic preservation, and especially Belmont, as you have. You're unique in this state to be able to do that, and I thank you, and our visitors, thank you.
And unfortunately, our next proclamation recipient is unwell and unable to come to the meeting, but she's such a larger-than-life person, for those of us who have worked with her over the years, Barbara Kirby, has a long shadow in Stafford County. She's volunteered for years, many years, and contributed greatly to the efforts of historical preservation, so I'm going to let, I had to fight over this with Mr. Cavalier, but he had appointed her, one of her terms, or two of her terms, to the Planning Commission, so he's going to read a proclamation for Mrs. Kirby, who we think is watching from a hospital bed right now.
And I, Barbara was my Historical Commission member, she was also a Planning Commission member from Rock Hill District, though, so she did a lot for the county, and we wanted to properly recognize her tonight, even though she wasn't able to be with us, but she was very much a part of this Historical Commission that you've seen tonight. So this is a proclamation recognizing Barbara Kirby for her contributions to the historic preservation in Stafford County. Whereas Barbara Kirby has been a champion for preservation of Stafford County's cultural resources since moving to the county in the 1970s. And whereas during her tenure on the Planning Commission from '94 to 2007, Mrs. Kirby worked with property owners and developers to preserve cultural resources on new development projects. And whereas Mrs. Kirby was a member of the Stafford County Architectural Review Board in 1995 and '96, and from 2001 to 2012. And whereas Mrs. Kirby served on the Stafford County Historical Commission from 2009 to 2017, advising the Board on issues related to historic preservation. And whereas Mrs. Kirby contributed to the documentation of over 400 cemeteries in the county while serving on the Stafford County Cemetery Committee since 2009. Whereas Mrs. Kirby is a life member of the Stafford County Historical Society. And whereas Mrs. Kirby achieved the status of Keeper of the Knowledge, a program established by the Historical Society recognizing individuals whose dedication, special witness, and enduring contributions are a vital link in the recording and understanding of the county's local, regional, and national history. And whereas the Historical Society stated that Mrs. Kirby is a living resource on historic county records and its general history. And whereas Mrs. Kirby has been a member of the Stafford County Museum Committee and its Foundation Board promoting the establishment of a new county museum. Whereas Mrs. Kirby worked for many years in the Stafford County Records Room, conducting research and advocating for archival preservation and restoration of the county's record. And whereas Mrs. Kirby's research produced a wealth of information about Stafford County's history and genealogy of its citizens. Whereas Mrs. Kirby volunteered much of her time in Stafford County's libraries, bringing educational opportunities to the general public regarding cultural resources. And whereas Mrs. Kirby served the citizens of Stafford County for nearly four decades through her passion and dedication to the preservation of Stafford County history. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on the 16th day of May 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize Barbara Kirby on her contributions to historic preservation and for her hard work and dedication to the citizens and history of Stafford County.
Four decades, that's, we hope you're watching that, Mrs. Kirby. Thank you so much. The next one is the last one before we get to the athletes, so you guys are being very patient. Mountain View Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad 35, Rescue Squad's 35th Anniversary Proclamation Presentation is next, and we are going to honor Mountain View Volunteer Fire and Rescue Squad on their 35th anniversary, and I'm going to have Mr. Snowins read that proclamation with Ms. Mauer.
Would you guys come on down?
Yep. Rescue Chief Ben Rains, and any other volunteers.
Anybody with Mountain View Rescue, come on down. Don't be bashful. Hey, I don't know but you guys, but it's kind of hot in here. Raise your hand if you think it's a little too warm. Maybe it's me. Of course, you get in a setting like this, you've got a lot of hot air sitting up here, so. I'll tell you one thing, folks, I'm, I'll let everybody get up here. I tell you, I'm very pleased, Wendy and I are very pleased tonight to be able to honor this group, who volunteer their services to Stafford County day in and day out. They don't get any pay, they get very little recognition, and believe me when I tell you, they volunteer hundreds, some even thousands, of hours every year. So I am so happy tonight to be able to present this proclamation. Mountain View Rescue Squad celebrated its 35th anniversary in March of 2017. The Mountain View Rescue Squad is all volunteer, that has run thousands of calls aiding the residents of Stafford County. Mountain View Rescue Squad raised money and provided its own squad building at absolutely no cost to Stafford County taxpayers. Mountain View Rescue Squad purchased the first rehab unit in Stafford County and has supported local charities in Stafford County since they began. Just a remarkable accomplishment from these folks, and keep in mind, they do it for absolutely nothing, they do it because they want to give back to their community. Now, therefore, be proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on the 16th day of May 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend the Mountain View Volunteer Rescue Squad for its service to the citizens of Stafford County.
Well, I want to thank you for all of your service, and you had a wonderful 35th anniversary, and how appropriate, I was late today because my daughter had slid into third base, and it looks like it might be broken, but fortunately, she's got her father with her getting an x-ray, and just a couple of months ago, the Rescue Squad went and visited my son who got on the wrong end of a chainsaw. So you have absolutely no idea how much I appreciate your service to Stafford County and the citizens of the Rock Hill District. Thank you very much for your 35 years of service and for bringing in generations, Ms. Rains, to come in behind you. So, thank you very much.
On behalf of Rescue Squad, I'd just like to thank all the citizens for allowing us to serve you over the last 35 years. A lot of our original charter members are still active in the squad and provide a lot of the behind-the-scenes work and training for our current active members. Just thank you to everybody that has helped us over the years.
Wendy, stay up there. Thank you. And our next proclamation is the Mountain View High School, Mountain View High School Field Hockey Team. So I'm going to ask the Mountain View High School Field Hockey Team to approach the dais. You guys won the 5A, Division 5A State Championship. Congratulations. Any athletes or coaches from that team?
Here we go, we're moving down. All right, well, you have absolutely no idea how proud I am for all of you and the hard work and the dedication that you put in to the field hockey program and to our coaches. Thank you so much for the hours upon hours that you give to these girls. And it's amazing what you guys have accomplished this year, and it wasn't that long ago that Stafford didn't have a field hockey program, and my colleague Meg here, that was one of her battles as a school board member. And so it's very exciting that in such a short period of time, you guys have taken the championship like you have, and I see no broken bones. So that's good news, and I'm going to read this proclamation here. Whereas the Mountain View High School Varsity Field Hockey Team had an 18-5 record, with three of the losses coming at the hands of the very talented cross-country rival, Stafford High School. You put that in, didn't you, Meg? Including the loss of the conference championship. This came from Meg. Whereas Mountain View High School worked hard and came back and beat Stafford High School to win the 2016 VHSL Division 5A State Championship. And whereas the members of the team are Lily Bringleston, Brianna Cross, Maggie Hubert, Maddie Hyatt, Molly Lynch, Madison Hatcher, Lily Stewart, Yasmin White, Michelle Snow, Natalie, is that Natalie? Natalie, okay. Dortelaro, Sierra White, Elizabeth Rainberger, Madison LaRoe, Riley Brzinski, Simone Tapp, Mackenzie Rivera, Samra Hughes, Maya Tino. And whereas the coaches of the team are Head Coach Kimmy Sullivan and Assistant Coaches Deb Hamilton, Christina Fallon, and Sierra Reynolds. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 16th day of May 2017, and it be and hereby does recognize and commend the Mountain View Varsity Field Hockey Team for their excellent representation of Stafford County and outstanding achievement in winning the Division 5A State Championship. Congratulations, girls, you have a lot to be proud of.
Congratulations, you really did good. You know, when I graduated from Stafford High School, before your parents were born, we didn't know what field hockey was. Somebody said, "How about ice hockey?" I had no idea. But we're really so proud of you, because for the first time in many, many years, Stafford County now has a presence across the Commonwealth. When people say Stafford County, they know that we have champions. So congratulations for everything you've done, and I hope next year, we can bring you back again. Thank you.
Good job. All right. Thank you. Good luck. Good luck. Good luck. Good luck. Good luck. Good luck.
All right, and that brings us to the Brookpoint High School proclamation. I'm going to have the athletes and students, student athletes and coaches from the Brookpoint High School Wrestling Team approach the dais. They won the Division 5A State Championship, it was the first ever wrestling state championship in Brookpoint's history. Mr. Cavalier and I are going to do this together. This proclamation, this is a proclamation to recognize and commend the Brookpoint High School Wrestling Team for winning the Division 5A State Championship title. Whereas, the Brookpoint High School Wrestling Team had previously only won one district championship since the school opened its doors in 1993, and whereas, through grit and determination, the Brookpoint High School Wrestling Team won the 2017 5A State Championship despite not winning the conference or the region, a huge accomplishment, and whereas, the members of the team are Bruno Alves, Justice Jones, Josh Monahue, Joseph Knight, A.J. Doutel, Paul Pierce, Nathaniel Nevison, Russ Pierce, Mike Roman, and Ramses Montalvo. And whereas, the coaches of the team are Head Coach Jake Johnson and Assistant Coaches Derek Manville, Mainville, and Travis Harris. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 16th day of May 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend the Brookpoint High School Wrestling Team for their excellent representation of Stafford County and for winning the 2000 Division A State Championship. Good job, guys.
Well, everybody knows I'm a little partial to Brookpoint, since all three of my kids went to school there too. My daughter was a state champion twice in swimming, though, so it's a little different from wrestling, but, you know, I know that you guys really worked hard and you should be very proud of your accomplishments. Congratulations.
Thank you to the board, and I just want to thank the parents, my athletic director, my principal, for all the support throughout the season. Thank you.
The next is the Colonial Forge High School Proclamation Presentation. May I have all of the student athletes and coaches from the Colonial Forge Girls Basketball Team please approach the dais? They won the Division 6A State Championship, this is the first girls' basketball team in Stafford County to win a state championship. Congratulations.
That's Kathy Cook, former coach at Drew Middle School.
All right. We have Mrs. Sellers and Ms. Bomke, and Mr. Snellings, I mean Ms. Mauer and Mr. Snellings.
Well ladies, this is quite a feat, because we've had some pretty good basketball teams in Stafford County, and especially coming out of Colonial Forge, three years ago, took my son, he was two, we went and watched the boys win their state championship, and then we were able to make it down for the end of your game this year. So congratulations, it was a lot of fun, and you guys did a, did a great job. So we do have a proclamation for you. A proclamation to recognize and commend the Colonial Forge High School Girls Basketball Team for winning the Division 6A State Championship title. Whereas, the Colonial Forge High School Girls Basketball Team, the Eagles, went from, from a 25-6 win-loss record to a state championship, and whereas Colonial Forge High School defeated Oakton High School 52-38 to win the 2016-2017 Division 6A State Championship, and whereas the Colonial Forge High School Squad was the first team from Stafford County to ever win a girls' basketball championship at the state level. And whereas, the members of the team are Riley Morrison, Jimmy Shellington, Alex Sullivan, Keona Warmack, Cameron Downs, Zakaya Lewis, Tania Brown, Shakira Austin, Olivia Gaither, Camille Downs, and Christian Chu, and whereas the coaches of the team are Head Coach LaShawn Cook, and Assistant Coaches Markell Davis, Antonio Howard, Delma Bernal, and the team managers are Isis Reed, Kristen Javar. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 16th day of May 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend the Colonial Forge High School Girls Basketball Team for its excellent representation of Stafford County and outstanding achievement in winning the 6A State Championship, Stafford County's first ever girls' basketball title. What this doesn't say is, some of you guys are juniors, right? We got some juniors on the starting lineup, so you guys could be back next year, so congratulations.
I just want to congratulate all of you, this is wonderful, I've got two young ladies that go to Colonial Forge myself, one graduated two years ago, and Alexis is on the softball team, both of them played softball. This is wonderful, and what a great way to represent Stafford County, and man, tonight, Stafford County's got a lot of winners, and that is just awesome. Gary?
Well, once again, thank you so much, congratulations for what you've done, I've been here all my life, and I've never known this many state championships in one year, so you should be very proud, and as Ms. Sellers said, we expect you all back next year, okay?
No pressure.
No pressure.
I just want to say, on behalf of Colonial Forge Girls Basketball Team, we would like to thank the board, as well as our community and our parents, and our wonderful administration at our school, Mr. Berry, Mr. Daniel, for not allowing us to pursue this opportunity and to always be by our side and cheering us on. It was greatly appreciated, and we thank you all.
Thank you, ladies. Good job. Good job. And there's still some, we still have some coming, guys. We have two more. We have now another Colonial Forge proclamation for the athletes and coaches from the Colonial Forge Wrestling Team. This team is very impressive, they have won 16 straight conference titles and 15 straight region titles. This year's Division 6A State Championship is their third in a row out of seven state titles overall. Congratulations.
You guys get out of college, you can go on security service. Tell you that right now. Well, I tell you, it's a pleasure to have you here, I know Colonial Forge has been famous for its wrestling teams for a number of years, and we couldn't be more proud of you, so I want to take this opportunity to give you this proclamation on behalf of the board. Whereas, the Colonial Forge High School Wrestling Team, the Eagles, won the 2016-17 Division 6A State Championship. The Colonial Forge High School Wrestling Team won its 16th straight conference title, its 15th straight regional title, and this year was the third in a row. Whereas, the members of the team are, and I'm going to botch some of these names, and I apologize in advance, Austin Mitchell, if I call your name, just raise your hand, Joseph Vestano, Alexander Smith, Levi Engelman, Mark Garofolo, Clay Smith, Jacob Martinez, Gerard Hunzinger, Jared Lowe, Matthew Stone, Easy, thank you. I don't like to butcher people's names, Ronzel Green, Marcio Ambres Rodriguez, and Alex Watson. And whereas, the coaches of the team are Head Coach Ian Squires, Assistant Coaches John Barr, Dale Oliver, Evan Stripling, Cameron Houston, Drew Squires, and PJ, thank you. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on the 16th day of May 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend the Colonial Forge High School Wrestling Team. Congratulations.
Like with the women's basketball team, thank you guys for what you did, it's a lot of work.
And I've been, I've been corrected, I want to make sure I've got this right, Mr. Snellings, they've won 17 straight conference titles and 16 straight region titles, is that right? All right, so we'll, we'll get you another one of those, but that's, we'll talk from, we'll speak from that point of view now.
And we will expect you back here next year, because for number 18, great job, great job, great coaching, sir, and thank you for all of your dedication to these young men. Looking forward to seeing you next year.
Thanks, we hope, we hope that we're back here next year, that's the plan, so, we really appreciate it, thanks for all your support, we hope everybody can make it out to a match next year, we have several on our schedule next year that are at home, so we really appreciate the support, so.
You guys are awesome. Thank you. Man, it's amazing. All right, and last and certainly not least, Stafford High School, may I have the student athletes and coaches from the Stafford High School Gymnastics Team approach the dais? They won the state 5A Championship, congratulations. This, for the first time in school history, the Stafford High School Gymnastics Team won the Division 5A State Championship.
So, as you all can see, we have a lot of great athletes in this county, and no matter where you go in the state of Virginia, they're always afraid of Stafford County, regardless of what sport it is. So here's a proclamation to recognize and commend the Stafford High School Girls Gymnastics Team on winning the Division 5A State Championship. Whereas, the Stafford High School Girls Gymnastics Team took first place at the Flip For A Cure Invitational, the Winterfest Invitational, and the Aloha Invitational, and whereas, the Stafford High School Girls Gymnastics Team won the 2017 Conference 15 Championship, as well as the Division 5A North Region Championship, and whereas, for the first time in school history, the Stafford High School Gymnastics Team won the 2017 VHSL Division 5A State Championship. And whereas, the members of the team are Jenna Shang, Jordan Dundee, Laney Kradowski, Sabrina Sarals, Caitlin Carrick, Rachel Peddow, Leah Morgan, Rachel Reisenfeld, Sidney Bornshine, Kayla Hubner, and whereas, the coaches of the team are Head Coach Sean Thurston and Assistant Coach Janet Barham Bernal. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 16th day of May 2017, that it be and hereby does recognize and commend the Stafford High School Gymnastics Team for their excellent representation of Stafford County and outstanding achievement in the 2017 season. Wow, congratulations.
I just want to say, from those of us who have just enough coordination to make it through the day, we look at you and the athletes and hope you'll pass this on to them, and we're certainly in awe, and, but we understand the countless hours that go into it, and I think what's amazing is these student athletes almost always are at the top of their academic game as well, so, in order to be able to do what they do and come together as a team, win a state championship, and maintain all those grades, we certainly really appreciate everything that goes into that.
I'm just going to say thank you to the board and our administration and all the support of our parents that we have, we have come a long way, and hopefully we'll be back next year. Thank you.
Congratulations. Well, what a wonderful, a wonderful series of proclamations, impressive, proud to be, proud to be a Staffordian. And before we get into our next item on the agenda, I want to tell you that John, one of our local heroes, a person named John McDonald, we call him Johnny Mac, Johnny Mac McDonald Battalion Chief, Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, was introduced to the, he died three years ago, and he is, he was a member of Stafford Fire and Rescue over here at Company Two, and if you were involved and, and on the board here, you would know Johnny Mac when he was alive. But he was inducted into the Navy Fire and EMS Hall of Fame during the CY 2000, calendar year 2016 Navy Fire and EMS Award Ceremony held at the Washington Navy Yard. Johnny began his Navy Fire and EMS career at Naval District Washington in 1984, and he served until his death on May 30th, 2014. Working his way up the ladder, he served over 20 years as a fire captain before accepting a promotion to Battalion Chief in 2009. In 2007, Johnny was a DoD Heroism Award winner for his role as the captain of the NDW Tower 21, in which he and his crew, crew made multiple rescues while operating on a mutual aid incident. Johnny, Johnny earned seven lifesaving awards over his career. Johnny was a lifelong Stafford resident, Johnny started his fire service career as a volunteer at Fire Department, at Stafford Fire Department, which is Company Two, we now know where it is, on Courthouse Road, and it used to be across here, Route 1, across from Akai Realty, where he served as citizens of Stafford County for 40 years, so I just wanted to let everyone know that Johnny Mac was inducted into the Hall of Fame. Thanks Johnny, we're, we're thinking about you. And with that, we will now go to presentations by the public, and I do have one speaker card, but after that speaker card, if anyone wishes to address the public, they'll have an opportunity to do so. You do have two opportunities to comment during this board meeting, one now, and one during the public presentation portion, excuse me, one during the public hearing, present portion of the meeting on a particular item, so if you want to speak to one of the items that's on for public hearing, this is, this is not the time to speak to that item. So, with, you'll have three minutes when you come up, you'll have a green light, and the yellow light comes on at two minutes, and the red light comes on when your time is up at the end of three minutes. Please address the board and speak as clearly as possible, and Ms. Ruth Carloni is, would like to speak to us about Akai Town Center. Ms. Carloni.
Ruth Carloni, 300 Mount Olive Road, I, we had some photos, the other woman isn't here, but, did you all get, oops, get to see the photos we took of the vacant and rundown? Oh, oh, please, take a look at them. But anyway, Ruth Carloni, 300 Mount Olive Road, and also, if Barbara's watching, she really deserved that award, she's done so much for the county. Okay, one of the things that you'll see from those photos, we're not really being too good about managing the appearance of Stafford County, I'm just putting it very mildly when you took, take a look at them. Chatham Center is one of them, and then down further out, we have just almost like a ghost town going out Route 3, the White Oak area, if you see that, it's like a ghost town, gas stations and marketplaces, and it's, I did meet with, they were kind enough to allow us to meet with them, Mr. Register and Mr. Colbert, I keep wanting to say Colbert, but anyway, they were nice enough to meet with myself, and I invited another woman to talk about the vacancies, and I thought perhaps they could work with the management teams and the owners of these buildings. You can't attract businesses if you don't take care of your properties, and I just want you all to take a look, when you get a chance, especially down in White Oak area, to take a look. But we're losing income by not getting those filled. The one, the only ones who benefit really is, are the owners, that they can go ahead and charge it off to a loss, but we're losing, like I said, to income, and I'm just hoping that perhaps you will get, I don't know how you'll handle it, I tried to handle it this way, but, anyway, so if you could please get with the management teams and the owners of these different buildings and where there's vacant, especially our Celebrate Virginia North, between that and the White Oak area and Chatham, you know, we could do a lot of- Between that and the White Oak area and Chatham, you know, we could do a lot better in getting them to upkeep. And that's about it, just, okay? Thanks.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Carloni. We'll take that under advisement. All right, that was my only speaker card, so anyone else here? Mrs. Clifton, you look like you're ready, okay. If you'd like to address the board, come on forward.
Mr. Chairman and member of the board, board, members of the board. I'm Irma Clifton, I live at one hundred Carter Street in beautiful downtown historic Dallas. And I wanted to thank you and the, the Historical Commission for that wonderful award that I received tonight for the work that I have done on Shelton Cottage. But I wanted to make it clear that I had lots of help, especially from the Shelton family, from people in the community there, especially Marsha Chavez. Also, I wanted to give a shout out to two members of Stafford County staff, Kathy Baker from Planning and Zoning, and Mr. Perkins, from Reggie Perkins from Parks and Rec, who has been so much help. There's just nothing that I didn't ask him to do that he didn't do. So hopefully, we'll be able to bring Shelton Cottage back to, to what it, close to what it was, and that it'll be of some use to the county, and that's my goal, that what's the use of it sitting there if you can't do something with it and make some use of it. So thanks again for that wonderful award, and I just wanted to give that shout out to those two people from the staff of Stafford County, because they were just absolutely wonderful to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to address the board? Going once. All right, we're gonna close that public presentation portion, and we're going to move on to public hearings. Number eighteen was removed from the agenda, so we will start with number nineteen, Planning and Zoning, Consider Amending Stafford County Code, Chapter twenty-two A, for the purchase of Development Rights Ordinance. Ms. Baker.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Kathy Baker, Assistant Director of Planning and Zoning. No presentation on this, this is just a brief amendment to the Stafford County Code, Chapter twenty-two A, Purchase of Development Rights. Currently, properties zoned A-one agricultural and A-two rural residential are eligible for the P D R program, and must be a minimum of twenty acres in size for consideration. The P D R Committee has recommended waiving that minimum lot size, the twenty acres, only in the instance where the property is adjacent to an existing P D R easement, as well as under the same ownership. So the parcel would have to contain one development right, a minimum, and still have to meet all the other eligibility requirements of the program. The Community Economic Development Committee did discuss this at April fourth meeting, and the board authorized public hearing on April eighteenth. So staff recommends approval, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? All right, no questions on that. So we will open the public hearing. Same rules apply, three minutes to speak, state your name and address and speak clearly. The public hearing is now open on this. Would anyone like to address the board? Okay, we will close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
And bring it back, and we have a motion.
Second.
A motion, a second by Mr. Thomas, he was, I could see his lips even though you were louder there, Mr. Snowings. I was looking that way. And we have a motion, a second on the floor, any discussion? All right, cast your votes. You may tally the votes when ready. All right, that passes seven to zero. Let's move to item number twenty. Consider a conditional use permit to allow one drive-through facility in the eight, in the Highway Corridor Overlay District along a portion of tax map parcel twenty dash four. Hi, Mr. Harvey.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. I'm Jeff Harvey, the Director of Planning and Zoning. I'll be presenting this case tonight. May I have the computer, please? This application is for a conditional use permit for a proposed Steak and Shake off of Garrisonville Road within the Griffiths Wide Water Election District. The property is currently zoned B-two urban commercial as the underlying zoning category with a Highway Corridor Overlay Zone that applies to the property. That's the reason why we're here before you tonight. The Overlay District requires that any use of the drive-through must have a conditional use permit that can govern the operation and traffic flow in and out of the property. The proposed C U P area is a little over an acre in size of a larger two and a half acre parcel. The applicant is Stakes of Virginia LLC, and they're being represented by Charlie Payne tonight. This is the location on aerial photo, the property is currently undeveloped, it's, has a number of commercial uses in nearby vicinity, and has direct frontage on Garrisonville Road and Kingsland Drive. This is the inset of the portion of the property that would be subject to the conditional use permit. And this is a bird's eye view from the street level of the proposed site. This is a shared entrance that will be, uses the primary access to the property, Kingsland Drive is further off in the distance. As part of this overall application, the applicant will be extending a turn lane into the shared entrance for road furniture improvements. This is a site plan that's currently valid and approved for the property, it shows a three-tenant, multi-tenant building, it's approximately fourteen thousand four hundred square feet in size. The applicant could move forward with construction of that today if they wanted to, but due to this opportunity of Steak and Shake, they've decided to alter their plans. This is the general development plan for the Steak and Shake, it shows a two thousand eight hundred square foot building with a single lane drive-through for the site. As I mentioned earlier, there would be a use of the shared entrance that serves the Valero, and this would be the main traffic flow coming into the site. There's also a rear entrance that would access the shared driveway as well to the Valero and a proposed connection out to Kingsland Drive. This would be the general traffic flow circulation pattern for the drive-through facility. As you may have seen in the staff report, there were some questions and comments about the dual traffic flow in this area. If there was more than probably eleven cars stacked within the drive-through, there may be a potential concern of conflict with traffic going this way, trying to get out at that direction, maybe somewhat remote, but that was a concern staff raised in the report. This is the architectural design that's being proposed with this application. With regard to the conditions of the permit, there are no recommendations for the architectural design in the conditions themselves. The staff notes that there are a couple of features with the architectural design that may not comply with the neighborhood design standards element of the comprehensive plan. That is a guide for development, and it applies to all development within the Highway Corridor Overlay District. Some of the features that the staff notes that would be different in the Highway Corridor Overlay Zone is it recommends that there be more earth tone colors. This is a black and white type of architectural coloration. It also would recommend there be some additional cornices or raised parapet areas along the roof line to break up the flat line, as well as potential building recessions and projections along the facade to make the facade stand out more. The applicant has some commentary on that, and we'll be discussing that with the board. These are some other images of similar Steak and Shakes that are being built in the area. The proposed conditions for the permit would limit the development to, in general accordance with the general development plan, there would be potential hours of operation of seven AM to two AM. Staff had some initial concerns in talking with the applicant about the hours of operation. There is a residential neighborhood behind the parent parcel of this property. In the interim, before a additional multi-tenant building would be built in the back of the site, there would be potential for noise concerns if there was an extended operation of the business. This was the hours that were discussed at the planning commission level. The site would connect to Garrisonville Road only through the existing interparcels access. The entrance closest to Garrisonville Road would be entrance only, as I mentioned, and a travelway connecting the site to Kingsland Drive would be required prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. That would allow for two sources of access in and out of the site and provide for beneficial traffic circulation. As you may know, this section of Garrisonville Road currently is a four-lane facility with a center left turn lane. In the long-range comprehensive plan, it is to be a four-lane upgrade with a raised median. This would be the next section of the widening of Garrisonville Road after the current section that's under construction up to Eustace Road is completed.
How much, you're getting dedication of right-of-way?
Yes, sir, that would, that would be something that'd be required with the site plan for the project, the applicant has committed, they'll dedicate the right-of-way in accordance with our comprehensive plan. The traffic study for the project showed that this drive-through in and of itself is not going to generate a significant amount of traffic beyond what could be allowed in the background traffic with development of the overall site. From a staff perspective and the positives, we find it consistent with the comprehensive plan recommendations as being located in a commercial corridor within a suburban area of the county. The commercial corridors recommend areas that serve the nearby community and also capture drive-by traffic. We believe it's consistent with the established development patterns in the area where there are a number of B-two zone properties and commercial uses along this section of Garrisonville Road, and the proposed conditions could help mitigate impacts. From a potential concern, staff had the comment about the two-way internal traffic flow, in talking with the applicant, they wanted some flexibility and be able to further design their site, so there could be some flexibility if there's not a specific condition to that effect. We did discuss the noise impacts, and Mr. Payne may address that in a little bit more detail as well. And then the staff notes the proposed building's not fully consistent with the neighborhood design standards. However, in general, the staff is supportive of the C U P and recommends approval pursuant to R seventeen one hundred with the conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Harvey? Okay, thank you, Mr. Harvey. We'll hear from the applicant, Mr. Payne.
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Payne, Law from Herschel Fleischer, and we represent the applicant. Thank you this evening for your time, thank you for staff's presentation. I think Mr. Harvey has covered most of the major points and basis of the application. I'll reiterate a couple of points and then add, add some thoughts and comments regarding the application. This is just right off the bat, this is the first Steak and Shake in Stafford County, I think it's the second one in the entire region, so we're very excited about that. I know my client's excited about being here in Stafford County and on this particular corridor. It's a, as you know, a well-traveled corridor, near the interstate, and again, a very positive opportunity for my client and for the county, in our opinion. As you know, this is a conditional use permit because we're within the Highway Overlay District, Corridor Overlay District, and we're requiring a drive-through. This property will be developed on the south side of the portion, it's a portion of twenty dash four, and so the south side of this particular property towards Garrisonville Road is what's being developed. The north side of the property, the other portion, if you will, will be developed for commercial purposes. In many ways, will buffer the activity that's occurring with the restaurant on Garrisonville Road. The anticipation is, is that the parcel to the north, if you will, will likely be an office just because of its location behind other commercial properties. In the, between now and whenever that property is developed, you know, as you can see in the plan or the initial overview by Mr. Harvey, the area is still fairly wooded, so a lot of the wooded area will stay in place except for the development requirements for access and for stormwater management will require clearing. But eventually, it will be all cleared, and there will be a commercial, a commercial use in the back. Of course, that will come with buffering requirements, et cetera, as you saw in the site plan, it's been approved, there are extensive buffering between the commercial site and the residential properties. As staff has noted, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We have dedicated right-of-way for the fifth lane along our portion of the property, we've also dedicated a hundred-foot turn lane and a hundred-foot taper right off of Garrisonville Road, which would be helpful for the traffic questions, traffic issues. We've also got extensive landscape buffering around the property as well, including to our north, southeast, and west. Again, this obviously will not have any impact on schools or parks and recreation. In addition to that, this is a positive economic development project and a job creator in Stafford County. The hours of operation, typically, the hours of operation for a facility of this nature throughout the country is twenty-four seven, because they attract a lot of traffic, obviously, off the interstate. But we heard staff concerns about being close to the neighborhoods or to the neighborhood developments to our north, so we agreed that, that the hours of operation would be from seven AM to two AM, which is similar to the Taco Bell not too far from this site. As staff had noted, the design standards, which are raised in pages six and seven of the staff report, were not per se consistent, in their opinion, with the guidelines that are in the comprehensive plan. We would ask, respectfully request, that the board include a condition that the development of the project and construction of the project be in accordance with the architectural features that we've submitted with our application. Those features are a very typical prototype, although we've made concessions on color and other requests from the county in regards to those elevations. But this is a proven prototype for this, obviously, national chain, and we ask that you include that as one of your conditions, so that when we get to the site plan stage, because again, my folks are in a hurry to get this project moving, of course, depending on condition on your approval, they are in a hurry to start the construction process and be in Stafford County. So we didn't want to get to a point where we're confused at the site plan stage or the building permit stage, where we have a respectful disagreement as to what those design standards are to be. So to facilitate this project, and again, I don't think there's an extensive deviation from the design standards with our architectural features, we do respectfully ask that you include that as a condition of this conditional use permit. In regards to the internal traffic, this is a proven model, this is a very typical model of the internal traffic flow for all of the Steak and Shakes, I'll say all of them, for most of Steak and Shakes throughout the country. So this model is proven, provenly works for my client, is something they're very comfortable with, and they can navigate and manage very well. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. We do have our engineer here and a representative of the applicant.
Any questions for Mr. Payne? Ms. Sellers, and then Ms. Bomke.
What's the sign gonna look like?
The signage? We submitted a sign.
I didn't see it in here. Maybe it is.
It's your typical, it's black and white on the facade, and then there's a red sign that's standalone.
Yeah, that's what I'm worried about, what's that gonna, it's not gonna be on a metal pole, not to get down to like, you know, it's not, I don't think we allow the metal pole signs, do we?
The H Con Design Standards, do those regulate, regulate signs also, Mr. Harvey?
Mr. Chairman and Ms. Sellers, the neighborhood design standards do have guidelines for signs. Also, to get to Ms. Sellers' question, our local ordinance does not allow for pole signs for freestanding signs, they have to be monument style on a solid base.
Okay, that's what I'm wondering.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Faroghi just reminded me, on our G D P, we actually have a monument sign, so it's not a pole sign.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand, what were the design standards that, where we deviated? Because Mr. Harvey indicated that there were some concessions that you all made, but I'm looking at the picture here, and then you made some comments, but I'm not really sure what they were.
Yes, ma'am. So on page seven of the staff report, there's three items that the staff has identified. As a parapet walls should feature three-dimensional cornices, as Mr. Harvey was describing about the corners.
Okay, so you are gonna change those?
No, he's trying to get, he wants to.
No, we're asking you to accept our design that we have submitted, architectural features that we have submitted. No use of exterior insulation and finish systems, E F S or pre-engineered metal panels as a primary facade material, although we have agreed to paint those and dress those up, if you will. Facades should utilize subtle earth tone colors, no use of black and white. Well, this is their standard prototype, black and white building. I mean, this is what, this is what you see at every Steak and Shake. Although we have agreed to, although we have agreed to a cream color versus white, so we have agreed to that.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm looking at the aerial for the one in Spaltsylvania, and it's a very similar situated lot, and it actually has the one-way. Would you, if we asked you to do the one-way, would you still have the same amount of parking spots, or would that be?
I think the parking is impacted, is that, no?
Would not have the same.
Would not have the same.
Can you come on?
Sure. I have Ryan Faroghi, our engineer on the job.
I know if you go to angled, you'd probably lose some, but you could keep the straight-in, which is showing exactly what you have, the same exact number of parking. which is showing exactly what you have, the same exact number of parking spaces, you would only just be able to get in to them one way. So before you say you're going to lose parking, I'm asking if you keep the square spots. I'm not saying you're going to angle them, because I know you would lose some if you angled them.
Mr. Thomas, Ryan Faroghi, Bagby Faroghi, good pastor, engineer for the project. The concern that you have with that is if you keep them square on a one-way, excuse me, on a one-way situation, you're really confusing the patron as to which way that they can back out. When they have a perpendicular stall, they feel that they can back out in either direction and go out either way, and specifically, since we have a one-way as the main thoroughfare that Mr. Harvey pointed out, you generally don't do a one-way with a square, with a perpendicular stall.
Do you have a problem with that in Spotsylvania, because that's exactly what you just described?
No, I know, but I would just tell you.
I mean, are there issues there that, do we have people accidentally bumping into each other?
No, I don't, I haven't actually looked at that aerial to see, do they have a one-way? My concern would be the one-way in off of the main entrance, right off of our shared access. Do they have a one-way in?
I'm not sure.
They have two entrances. They have one in the front. They have one in the front, and then you can go further down and come one in the back, and it's a longer, so it's not, it looks different than this. Like, from the road where yours is horizontal, theirs is vertical, right? If I'm thinking correctly, so it's situated differently.
They actually have three two-ways in and out, so that it is completely different.
Okay, so yeah, that's, that would be my concern, is that come in. Any other?
All right. Any more questions? We'll go ahead and open the public hearing then at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Same directions you've heard already. Come on down, say your name and your address, and the green light comes on, and the red light means you're finished talking.
Billy and Lonnie Zek, 109 Austin Drive. If you recall from the picture that you had on slide five, we're the house that's closest to this in the court.
You can bring that up if you'd like.
For 29 years.
We moved down here in January of 88. We appeared before this board probably, I want to say, 98, 99. Needed to get a variance because we had to deal with floodwater coming into our basement. To back up a moment, when we moved down in January of 88, we were immediately met with floodwater in our basement in March of 88, and we put up with it for about 10 years. And the county told us, well, we can't do anything about that because that was built back in 75, and it wasn't zoning in, and right now it's unoccupied and it's unowned, and there's no one to go back against to turn around and change it. And with it being dirt and trees and all that right now, I recognize that doesn't necessarily absorb a lot of moisture because we still get a lot of flooding through the backyard. But when you pave it and you turn it into concrete, it's going to absorb a lot less water. So if there's not a comprehensive plan for getting rid of that stormwater retention or having a stormwater retention pond there that would take away from the office building that you're planning on putting in that back area there, I think that's going to be a problem. When the Fast Mart was built before, which was Fast Mart before the Valero, a guy named Judd Honaker and Silver Companies came along, consulted us on how to help with this of the stormwater running off that pavement, and that seemed to help somewhat. But it still runs off of that pavement to the east, and because of the lay of the land and our property is lower than that and water runs downhill, it comes right through my backyard, two of my neighbors' backyards, and finally gets over onto Oak Ridge Drive.
It runs all the way through.
The part about the extra noise and the drive and all that, I mean, there's been numerous accidents there on Route 610 because of the suicide lane that people have to go out and accelerate into in order to get on 610 just because of the volume. I'm not sure what the median, if it extends that far, is going to do about that. Additionally, the current trash pickup, which is the big dumpsters, they come along with their trucks, they don't do it during the day, they don't do it during busy hours. It's 2:00 a.m. So I can plan on, you know, getting woken up two times a week when that truck comes in there and rustles around for a little bit, dumps the dumpster, backs up, goes to the next one, turns around, and proceeds on, and I presume that the same thing is going to happen with the Steak 'n Shake here.
Which that travelway comes out to the, almost it looks like to the back of the building of where the Valero strip mall is?
I got it right.
So anyway, that's extremely close also. I mean, that's close to the gas pumps and everything on there, but trying to get out on Kingsland is terrifying. It is very difficult.
And I'd welcome the opportunity to talk to the engineer about what the plans are for taking care of the stormwater that's going to come off of that.
All right.
And the light issue, the lights, the bright lights.
All right. We're going to have him address this.
And it's bright.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the board on this matter? All right, we will close the public hearing, and we'll give the, oh, we have a, we do have someone that wants, we're not going to close the public hearing. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Board, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. My name is Dan Scolaro, and I'm from 3713 Acquia Drive. And I wanted to just ask a question as to whether or not you had resolved the discrepancy in the operating hours of the establishment. I know that previously stated in the meeting minutes, the operating hours are from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and that there was some discussion about limiting that down to midnight. And I would like to put forth, you know, residents of the community that even that might still be too late, and that something like 11:00 p.m. might help the gentleman who just spoke with his noise issues, and might also just contribute to more of a family-friendly environment such that I think that Steak 'n Shake wants to have in our community, and that opening up till 2:00 a.m. really doesn't, doesn't help that situation too much. So I don't know if that issue is closed yet or not. I know it was brought up before, and I just wanted to get some answers on that as some closure, if I could.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else like to address the board on this item? All right, I'm really closing the public hearing now. It's closed. Would the applicant like to respond?
Mr. Chairman and other members of the Board of Supervisors, again, Charlie Payne with Law Firm Herschel Flyer. We represent the applicant. I'm going to address quickly the hours of operation and any questions you may have as well, but I'm going to let Ryan address the site questions that were raised by the neighbors. But just in regards to the hours of operation, again, I mean, typically, it's a 24-hour operation. You know, when the staff did raise some concerns about, you know, obviously being open 24 hours in that particular part of the county, but we thought 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. was, one, consistent with our model, and, two, would allow us to be competitive, and, three, consistent with what the Taco Bell, what their operational hours are on that corridor not too far from us. So that's in response to the hours of operation. And Ryan, do you want to address the onsite questions? Stormwater management, dumpsters, and lighting and?
Tell me when you're ready. Come on.
Members of the Board, Ryan Faroghi, Bagby Faroghi, good pastor, engineer for the applicant. Let me try to, I want to make sure I summarize exactly what the, what the concern was, stormwater management, site lighting, and access off of Kingsland.
I think that's correct. And dumpsters.
And dumpsters, okay. All right. Let me start with the access off of Kingsland. We, in our review, we did receive comments from VDOT pertaining to the access with the future expansion of 610. It's anticipated that the full median will be put in, which will limit this site to a right-in, right-out at the access off of 610. The Kingsland access is too close to Eustace Drive to get a signal put in, so we actually received recommendations from VDOT that there is a potential that that access may also be closed from a crossover standpoint. So both may be right-in, right-outs. They did not say definitively one way or the other until they do their studies and their operations, but at this point, that we were, I guess, if you will, put on notice that that is a, that is a potential. And I believe the GDP, if I remember correctly, yeah, the GDP actually, the GDP actually is anticipating with regards to the suicide lane, we've kind of actually set that up as a right-in, right-out with the, with the main entrance being a, just a flow-in. So I think that's all that we can offer this time at the, regarding access off of Kingsland. Get back to my notes here. Site lighting. The current existing approved plan that, as Jeff has indicated, that could be developed, could be started under permit today, has met all of the, actually, old site lighting standards, which if I'm not mistaken, were much more stringent than the ones that were recently, the ones that were recently upgraded or updated. But regarding site lighting, Stafford County requires all of it to be downward-facing, you know, shields, and, you know, we have to be, I think, a half a foot candle at every property line, and that, you know, half, three-tenths of a foot candle. VDOT requires three-tenths of a foot candle at the right-of-way line. So while the interior of the site will be lit up, as Stafford County prescribes in their codes, the, every effort will be made, and plan approval won't be granted until we meet the off-site, you know, the foot candles at the, at the individual property lines. And then the last two, stormwater management regarding the facility. If I'm understanding correctly, let's see if I can make this thing work here. The citizen, this is their property?
Computer, please.
I'm sorry. Have the monitor, please. Is this your property? Is that, you're right on the end of the cul-de-sac?
Well, we have both all the way down the line, the dividing line to your right about that.
You're this one here?
We're the split, where the road is, basically where that drive is, that line, that's the middle of our backyard.
That's your backyard right there? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, it's the one you left.
Correct, I've been here. Okay. So could I go to the slide with the approved GDP, with the approved site plan, please? Thank you. Perfect. So as Charlie had indicated, the site is fully wooded now. The current development plans for this, for this project were approved under the old stormwater management regulations, which required the site cannot discharge any volume of water greater than what is currently leaving the site now. And that's not just for their specific location, that's for the entire site. So with respect to that, there actually won't be a facility, an above-ground facility that you'll be able to see. This will be an underground facility buried underneath the parking lot that has a series of chambers underneath that allow for twofold water to infiltrate into the soil structure as it similarly does now, but then also will have several, several mechanisms for overflow during the heavy rain events. It is the intent with the stormwater facilities, with all stormwater facilities, is to, at a minimum, capture the first flush of every, of every summer storm. That's where the most pollutants and particulates enter the, enter the watershed. So we do that, and then we're also required to monitor the two-year velocity so that there's no erosion potential downstream, and then we also have to adhere to the volume component of the 10-year, which we can't discharge anymore from the site. And like I said, it's not just specific to their outfall location right here. We have to take the entire site, determine what the runoff is for the entire site. Not every drop of water is going in this direction, some of the water is going this way, which further reduces the amount of water that will go towards the rear of the property. But we have met the, we have met the regs, letter of the law, two-year, 10-year, and then 100-year. We don't have to control the 100-year storm, we have to contain the 100-year storm, and all of those volumes of water are taken care of in the underground stormwater management, underground stormwater management facility.
Okay, so I'm trying to understand, in the site plan, are you taking these trees out in this back section?
No.
No. Okay, so the stormwater management is under the building itself? Is that what you're saying?
No, the stormwater facility is not permitted to be under the building, it will be under the parking lot.
Around the building?
Around the building, correct.
And you're going to leave the trees in the back until, unless and until you guys have another?
Correct.
Office building customer?
Correct, correct.
Okay. So would you guys consider doing something in the back here with, I don't know what they're called, but where you, with, they can use vegetation to capture whatever the excess runoff is? They're doing it every mile, like, I hear what you're saying, you can't have any excess, but I get what they're saying, too. Coming from the district with the most trees down, all of a sudden, this water comes from nowhere. And so have you guys considered, or would you consider working with these property owners to look at some vegetation efforts? Like, they can use rocks, they can do a whole bunch of stuff back there with cypress trees and?
Well, actually, to, to address your point there, Mrs. Sellers, is, it's very hard to see, but at the end of the outfall there, there's a little hatching right in this little circle right here where there is a series of riprap to help diffuse and, diffuse and energy dissipate the water that will be discharging from the facility. As you can also see, we have a pretty thorough amount of vegetation already around the facility. I believe they have some existing vegetation on their property behind the fence as well. And to your, and to your point about the underground, about the info, about the rain garden or vegetative things, usually what those are trying to capture is an infiltrative type of, where the water actually infiltrates back into the ground before it actually rushes off. This facility is designed just for that. It's got a gravel bottom, it's not a pervious, sorry, it's not an impervious bottom. There will actually be the soil structure, then there will be six to nine inches of stone. The chambers sit on top of the stone. The water's allowed to infiltrate in, and then the water, the water comes into this facility, infiltrates down in, and then only when there's excess will it go out to. So it's a little different than a conventional stormwater, you know, conventional dry pond where it just sits in the bottom of it and just sits there. This is actually a gravel bottom on the bottom of this chamber.
And will this go, when will this go in?
This will go in with the first phase of development, so with the Steak 'n Shake.
So this will go in with the Steak 'n Shake?
Yes. It has to.
Okay. Thanks.
And your dumpster question.
Is that stormwater?
I believe so. I don't know, Ms. Mauer?
So the parking lot, that's going to be an asphalt parking lot, are we doing, we did some sort of thing over at the Verizon store that was just an absolute nightmare?
It was a disaster. We're not doing that.
Okay. Yeah, that was Chipotle in Verizon, you know what I'm talking about. We're not going there.
I've eaten at that Chipotle countless of times, and it's, it was a disaster, and thank God someone had the sense to put in some asphalt there and make that work, because I didn't understand that from day one. So we're not doing that.
You're not doing that?
No, this will be a, this will be a asphalt parking lot on top, this underground stormwater management facility. The reason they were doing that, not to bore you with a bunch of engineering details, is to try to capture water quality and BMP and reduce runoff. The underground facility will take care of all that in and of itself. We are not proposing.
And save you space.
Exactly. It allows more usable space to the, for the project.
All right.
Agreed.
Dumpster.
Okay, regarding the dumpster, if we can go to the GDP, please. We are slightly different than the Valero. As you can see here, the existing dumpster, as the citizen has pointed out, is right up against their property line, more or less. What we've designed, you know, we have kind of a double-edged sword here. We can't obviously put the dumpster right on 610, I don't think anybody would approve of that. So what we've done is kind of pushed it as, in the middle of the site as far away as humanly possible. So our dumpster is actually here, which is probably a good 100 to 150 feet closer to 610 than would be the existing dumpster that the Valero, that the Valero's at. And again, I don't think we want to move it any closer forward because I don't think we want it to be visible from 610.
Ms. Mauer?
Mr. Harvey? Anthony Toigio might be able to answer this question, because I've had, we have ordinances when it comes to trash pickup, from what I understand, but are those ordinances the same for commercial as they are for residential?
Ms. Mauer, I don't remember all the details. I do recall that the county code has limitations on hours, and it's either 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning, something like that, for trash pickup.
So not to put you on the spot, Mr. Toigio, but you just did that research for me. Do you know those hours offhand?
I do. Not for personal, that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harvey, if you don't, you.
Anthony Toigio, Citizen Action Officer. The hours we're speaking of, Mrs. Mauer, it's 6:00 a.m. for residential is the earliest a commercial provider can pick up from residence. Don't know about commercial.
Okay.
But 6:00 a.m. for residential.
And we have different, different hours for commercial?
We don't know.
To your regulation, you don't know? Okay. If there is a violation, can we let the property owner know, please?
Let them know the hours at least, so they'll know if there's a violation, then we can take, help them. Mrs. Bomke, and then Ms. Sellers.
Okay, so regarding the hours for the Steak 'n Shake, if you look at your prototypes around the country, around this region, a lot of them are 24/7. How many of them do they push back to maybe close at midnight, close at 11?[1788.38] I mean, do you ever adjust the hours when you realize, okay, business really isn't gonna be that crazy in the wee hours of the morning? Do you make adjustments?
Can you say that you have the, the...
Right, right, right.
I don't have the answer for what they're doing in other places, other than the prototype is typically 24 hours, 24/7. I do know that when this first came up, we kind of set it up the ladder, if you will, and their response was, because this is a sort of a new market for them, they want to be as competitive as possible, and if they need to adjust in the future, they will, but they felt that that was sort of their sweet spot, if you will, that timeframe. So we did run that process through them, just to see if we could adjust at the midnight, and I think there was a, you know, hey, we wanna, we want to be as competitive as a Taco Bell right down the street, so I think that was, that was the issue.
Ms. Sellers, and hopefully we'll get a motion here soon, and we can just go into the discussion phase, we're still on the rebuttal phase right now.
So if, if you have, if you're conditioning for the hours, they can't pick up trash outside of those hours, could they? Could they have any activity on that property outside of those hours? Rashida, I'm kind of asking you.
Typically, the, well, just gonna jump up and answer that question, but typically the hours of operation when you're open for business, as, in regards to prepping and trash pickup and other things, that's, that's a different, that's a different timeframe.
Okay.
Is that what you're gonna say?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Snowings?
If you could have the engineer come back up, I'm a little confused, and that's not hard for me to get, but, I'm talking about the stormwater. You indicated that there would be a system under the parking lot?
Yes, sir.
Parking lot's gonna be paved?
Yes, sir.
How's the water gonna get to it?
So, if you can go back to the site plan screen, please. So, the development, the proposed development, as seen in, in this particular example here, has a collection of catch basins that collect the surface runoff, because the, the entire site is curb and gutter. So there's a catch basin that the water drains into, drains down, goes into a pipe, and then the pipe is, it collects the water and then takes it to the underground stormwater facility via piping.
And basically, we're starting to see that more and more over the years, because stormwater management, typical, traditional stormwater management in Stafford used to be a pond, right, or, or an area. It takes more land. You're doing this, this is strictly for, this is expensive, and you're doing it because it saves space, I'm assuming you think...
This is strictly in economics, the price per square foot for land versus the price per square foot to build a dry pond, it's strictly economics.
Yep, thanks. All right, so we are now, let's kind of bring this back to the board, and it's in the Whitewater District. Oh, I, I think I did, but I'll close it again, just in case. Remember, yeah, I did.
It is in my district, and I would like to move for approval of R-17-100 with the applicant's inclusion of the architectural features, as was described by Mr. Payne, the three items in particular. So I would like to formalize that as a motion.
And that's okay for you? Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve this, basically with the building looking exactly like you saw on the picture, which is, I think, a very similar to the one that is on in Massaponix, without any awnings or architectural features that are part of our neighborhood design standards. Discussion? Mr. Snowings?
Well, I'm satisfied with the stormwater, I'm satisfied with the dumpster, I'm not satisfied with the hours of operation. I've dealt with chain restaurants and chain stores all my career, 7-Eleven being the biggest one. I've never seen a chain of any type have the same identical hours across the country as flexibility. 7-Eleven, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, or 24-hour. So I'm, that, that's my major concern, and I, I know what it is to live beside a lot of noise. So I don't think I can support this, even though the district supervisor is supporting it, but for that one reason, I, I have real, real problems with it.
All right. Mr. Thomas?
Can you pull up the GDP again, please? I generally like the project, so I'm definitely leaning in favor of the project, but I'm, I'm just going back to that one-way versus two-way traffic flow, and, you know, staff was in support of the one-way, and I think if it was two-way all the way around the building, I wouldn't be as concerned, but you have this one-way on the top, so if somebody comes in off Garrisonville Road on the left side of the property, and they make a right in, and they decide they can make a left, and then they're gonna be running into one-way traffic at the top. I originally was on the applicant's side when I thought they would lose parking spots. So I'm still just curious where the rest of the board might be on that. It's not a deal breaker for me, but I do think I tend to support staff's recommendation on that.
All right. I think it was Ms. Sellers, had her hand up in the middle, then Ms. Bomke.
I'm gonna support this. Obviously, I seconded the motion. And why we have so many questions about stormwaters, because what you guys are experiencing, we experience throughout the entire county. And so I think all seven of us have learned and taken an, an interest in stormwater management upfront, and to try and figure out how we mitigate these. I do like the underground pond, I think a lot of thought's been put into it, I wish more sites would do these under, underground ponds. As far as the hours of operation, the McDonald's down the street towards North Stafford, I think is probably gonna be more what you're going towards than the Taco Bell, just knowing how the people live up there. And they were at one time open 24 hours and have reduced their hours back. So the 2:00 AM I don't mind, because I, I figure with demand, you'll change your hours accordingly. And if you're not getting people there at 2:00 in the morning, you're not gonna stay open and staff at a 2:00 in the morning. So I don't mind working with the hours, but I'll be supporting this.
Yeah, I, I hope what Ms. Sellers indicated is correct, and that the hours would be adjusted, but once we approve the CUP, then that's what the applicant receives. So I'm also concerned about the hours and the stormwater issue. I deal with more stormwater issues in my district than anything else, and I'm looking at those people back there going, how are you protected in the event the water flows on your property? And there isn't any protection. And I get a call every day about, from somebody about stormwater, so I, it just makes me nervous, and I'm concerned about the hours being too late for the neighborhood. There are probably other people that are interested in this, but just aren't here for the public hearing tonight, so I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Mr. Cavalier?
Well, I am gonna support it, be, because, let's face it, 610 is the top commercial corridor in the county, and this is frontage on 610, it's premier property in the commercial world, everybody wants to be on 610. And I think that this fits in, you know, very well with the other kind of businesses that we have. I wouldn't have been opposed to the 24/7, to tell you the truth. Now, I will never be there past 10:00 at night, but that's me. But, so, you know, I, I think it was nice that you limited your hours of operation to 2:00 AM. Probably that's right for this particular area. I don't, I don't know, but I can't imagine there's much traffic out there past 2:00 AM. And, you know, I know you had some concern about, about stormwater. I, I think that with the system that they're putting in, that that will be much better than a stormwater management pond, that, you know, I've seen those fail too. I've also, I can relate to your issue with the suicide lanes, those are never good anywhere, and as we extend and widen Route 610 out, there will be medians in the center, so we know more of that anymore. You know, you'll have lights that you can cross at, and it's a lot safer. So, at this point, I, I think that this will be a good addition to the, to the county in terms of extra tax revenue and for service to, to the county, and I think it'll fit in nicely. I, I don't have any problem with the design things, because I agree that branding is important, and we shouldn't force people to change a proven product just because we have, you know, our own set of design standards that doesn't fit. You can't fit everything into a, a box, and so in some cases, we have to be flexible, and I'm willing to do that. So I support this, thank you.
Exactly. But there's only one person left to speak, besides me.
I am gonna support this. I, I wholly understand your stormwater management, let me tell you, nothing I hate more than when it rains. And it's, it's, I think Meg and I have most of the stormwater management areas, according to our Citizen Action Officer over here, and I think the development is actually gonna help, because they're gonna have a specific stormwater management retention system within the development itself. And if development is done right, especially with our newer standards, it, it can collect that water and, and prevent it from running onto your property, and, which is why we asked all of those questions. And so, so from that perspective, I, I am gonna support this.
All right. Well, I'm not going to support it. I'm close. The design standards, we have them for a reason. I, I appreciate that you have a prototype that looks good to you and that you use across the country, but we have, everyone, every fast food restaurant has one, and they, they have to tailor those to the, to the individual communities in which they ask permission to locate if they need to ask. So I don't understand that we would just abandon our design standards every time someone comes in with a prototype. And by the way, I don't particularly think that's, I mean, it's, it's a box, it's a square building, and I assume it has metal panels and all the things we specifically asked not to have, and so I, and we have a lot of that in Stafford. That mistake was made for decades here, and so there's a reason why we created those in an attempt to try to change the look. I also am concerned about the two, the distance off of 95. I assume at 2:00 AM you're gonna be trying to get your, you're getting 95 traffic, it's two and a half miles up 610 to, to get to that restaurant. But I would probably still support it if you, if you put those design standards back in. I want you to be successful, and, and we appreciate the tax revenue and people wanting to do business here. So with those last words, we have a motion for approval with a variance to not allow us to impose our design standards past their shown GDP in a, in a second.
Have Mr. Payne say something.
Just in regards to comments that we heard, we'd be willing to pull back, if you will, our request that the board include as part of the condition architectural features that were submitted, and that we would work with the county in regards to their interpretation and the performance of the design standards, if that's, if that's the wish of the board.
You can count, I, I don't know how many votes you have for sure, looks like you're close. If you're offering, I'll accept that, and you'll get my vote.
And, and I think that's important, again, you guys probably know this, the Steak and Shake at Massaponix is the number one producing Steak and Shake in Commonwealth, Virginia, so we're excited about being here and want the opportunity, and again, they want to move forward as fast as possible.
Okay, so I'll modify my original motion to, back to what it is stated in the, in the book.
You modifying your second? All right, we now have a modified approval. And with that, I will say that I also agree that stormwater management, since it's going to matter, and my vote matters, stormwater management is, I think, is handled sufficiently, and we will work with the, this is something that's, that is, the design has to be put place, in place and approved, and we will, this county should have your back, and that's the idea on this stormwater management issue. All right, please cast your votes. And you may tally the votes. And that passes five to two. Congratulations. And we have another drive-through consideration, this time in the Acquahia District, Acquahia Town Center, item 21.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is also a conditional use permit for a drive-through at Acquahia Town Center with the Acquahia election district. If I can have the computer, please. The proposed, proposal is due to the Highway Corps overlay district as well. However, the, the base zoning for this property is planned traditional neighborhood development. It's on a .73 acre parcel within the overall Acquahia Town Center project. The applicant is Carl Becker of Becker Venture LLC, and he's represented by Ryan Farugie. This is the, the location of the site and existing conditions. The property is currently vacant. There had previously been a goodwill retail center on the site, which has been demolished. The site exists as a current parking lot, and it's located adjacent to the, the new Acquahia 15 apartments, which are located in this area here. Surrounding uses include a Mexican restaurant along Garrisonville Road, a Kentucky Fried Chicken in this location, a gas station, as well as Ruby Tuesdays. So the area, and McDonald's is on this parcel up here. A number of the restaurants in the area, specifically the KFC and the McDonald's currently have drive-through facilities. This proposal would be consistent with those types of activities. Again, this reflects the zoning, for the most part, this site, as well as the apartments and rest of, the bulk of the Acquahia Town Center to the east is zoned PT&amp;D. The property's along Garrison, excuse me, along Jefferson Davis Highway, and the front two tiers of lots are typically zoned B2 urban commercial. This shows you a, a street-side image of the property as it exists today. This lot currently is used to some degree by an, an adjacent use, which is a automobile repair business and tire sales. This use would have to have shared parking, and any parking with that car repair business will have to be accommodated on their site. They had original approval for so many spaces. I understand some of it's being used for storage right now, so that you may have to make adjustments accordingly once this site develops. This also shows the proximity of the apartment building to the parking lot, which would be for this proposed use.
It's, you say parking lot, but it's an undeveloped pad site, correct?
Yes.
It just looks a lot like a...
As you can see from this image, the part closer to Route 1 is, is the area that's undeveloped, and then we have an existing parking lot off to the east part of the property. This is the regulating plan for Acquahia Town Center. It has four transect zones, SDC, which is sort of a downtown zone, it's where you're gonna have uses that are, are gonna attract people from outside of the project. You have a T6 zone, which is a more intense sort of downtown zone that includes, in this case, a mix of apartments and all, well as retail, and then the T5 zone, which has office and retail uses as well. And this is the overall site in proximity to the transect zones. This is the generalized development plan. It is not conditioned, because the applicant currently does not have an end user in, in mind, or they have an end user they, they like to track, but no one currently on contract. So the conditions speak to the existing access points, as you may recall from the aerial photography. This is an existing travel lane that serves the auto repair business, as well as a dentist's office and the restaurant along Route 1. There's also an existing travel lane that goes between the site and Ruby Tuesdays. There's a travel lane between the apartments in this site, which will eventually have a Fred bus stop. That was a proffered improvement with the Acquahia Town Center project. And this is also a travel lane that goes behind the first tier of lots within Acquahia Town Center. So as you can see on this particular property, the site is bounded by travel lanes on four sides, some of which, the travel lanes are actually on their property. So it, it does kind of limit where the access points potentially can be, because we do have the, the bus stop in this location, we have a, a service area for the Ruby Tuesdays in this location, and then we have the entrances for the existing businesses on the south side. So there is some flexibility within how they designed the drive-through facility on the site, but it's somewhat limited because of the small size of the property. This is the circulation pattern that you'd see for the drive-through window. On this concept, the drive-through window is located in this area right here, and stacking to meet the code requirements would all stay within the overall site. And that shows the menu board location. That was one of the concerns staff had about the potential for speaker. Due to the location of the apartments, the speaker would be oriented away from the apartments, and it'd be limited to one outdoor speaker in a single drive aisle lane. As I mentioned, this is the Fred bus location that's gonna be built soon. And we mentioned about architecture. The Acquahia Town Center has a, architectural design standards that apply. This is an example of a typical retail building. The standards go into details about the features of the architecture that you'll see similar to this, specifically with the discussion of the parapet walls and awnings and brick, as well as glass type of features.
They're more, they're more stringent than the ones we were talking about earlier, correct, on, on the Steak and Shake? They're more, they're more stringent than the ones we were talking about earlier, correct, on, on the Steak 'n Shake?
Yes, yes, they are. They, they cover a bigger project and has a variety of different uses. Proposed conditions, as I mentioned, about the loudspeaker is trying to address potential impacts to the apartments. Similarly, there'd be some restrictions regarding illumination and signage. So any sign on the east side of the building facing the apartments would not be lit. The monument side, if they have one on the site, would be oriented towards Route 1, further away from the apartments. The, any dumpster enclosure have the masonry treatment to blend in with the architecture of the building. Deliveries on the site would be between 12:00 AM, or, excuse me, there would be no deliveries between 12:00 AM and 7:00 AM. The hours of operation would be from 5:00 to 11:00 on Sunday through Thursday and 5:00 to 12:00 Friday and Saturday. And that was an extensive discussion at the planning commission level due to the proximity to the apartments. Other issues I mentioned about the adjacent auto service use and this parking deficit. Again, those are things that the property owners will have to work out. My understanding currently, the owner of this property also owns that property where the auto service center is. So it's likely he'll rectify the situation when the property is developed. The comprehensive plan recognizes that Acquahia Town Center is a special planning area and desires special attention. The staff and the planning commission believe that this proposed use will enhance the activities within Acquahia Town Center and be complimentary to the live-work nature of that location. The staff's findings, we believe is consistent with the comprehensive plan, consistent with the development pattern within the center. The regulations, which require architectural treatment, are consistent throughout the Acquahia Town Center and it should not be an issue or a concern. We believe the proposed conditions mitigate impacts to adjacent residences and do not see any apparent negative aspects. The staff is recommending approval of the application pursuant to R1702, excuse me, 102. And the planning commission also is recommending approval.
All right. Do we have any questions for Mr. Harvey?
So does the,
Mr. Thomas?
Does the resolution have all of those conditions or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because it looked like that was different than what the planning commission, because they, they changed some hours as well. Just wanted to make sure it was all in the, the resolution in front of us.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. All right. How about, we hear from the applicant, even though Jeff did a perfect job of presenting it?
Members of the board, Ryan Ferrughi, Bagby Ferrughi, Good Pasture, engineer and applicant, engineer and applicant representation for the applicant. Wanted to say thanks to Jeff and the, and the board for presentation and your time. I apologize, I'm not as polished as Mr. Payne up here, so I'll kind of stumble and fumble through this, so be kind to me. I think Jeff hit on all the, hit all the major talking points on the project. But a few things we'd like to, you know, point out and address is, as Jeff had also indicated, the applicant doesn't have a specific end user in mind yet. They are trying to attract a specific user such as a coffee shop, Dunkin' Donuts, Starbucks, et cetera, that type of a, that type of a user. There's not really one on that side of the, on that side of the corridor. I'm a resident of Acquahia Harbor, so I know, I have to make my own coffee every morning. And so part of the reason that we wanted some of that flexibility was that this parcel is one level back off of the frontage off of Route 1. So there's a KFC in front of us, you know, so they don't have direct access visibility right off of Route 1. So we wanted to have the flexibility to be able to situate the building and orient the building so that we could capture as much visibility from Route 1. That's going to be our generator. Obviously, we do have some, you know, quite a number of residential, residential dwellings behind us or are very close to us in proximity now. So that was part of the reason too, that we didn't exactly proffer or condition in this case, the GDP. The, with respect to the parking deficit, again, Mr. Becker, the app, the, the owner of this piece of property also is the, is a, is an owner in the tire center. They've already been put on notice that, you know, development plans are coming forward and that the parking will have to be rectified. I believe Mr. Becker is strongly recommending that they provide some additional site plan work so that they can satisfy their problems that they have because the overflow parking is not going to, not going to be there. So again, that's been, that's been addressed. The, with respect to the loudspeaker, again, we completely understand the planning commission's concerns, staff concerns. We had a condition in place facing it away, one loudspeaker facing it away from the residential. That makes perfect sense. The applicant has no concerns about that. Again, we situated the dumpster in judiciously as possible so that we are away from the residents, away from the visibility of the Route 1 corridor. In light of the recent discussion on the previous application regarding hours of operation, I'm hesitant to, to ask this. But the applicant would like to request, if at all possible, that the hours of operation, even though they're slightly different than what is in front of you, to be seven days a week from 5:00 AM to midnight. I think every, I think the conditions are currently stated from 5:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Sunday through Thursday and 5:00 AM.
So one more hour on?
One, one more hour on the non-peak days, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Or Friday and Saturday. So one more hour. Again, they are competing for, you know, with coffee with respect. They are competing with McDonald's. They're not competing with the KFC for coffee, obviously, but the McDonald's is 24 hours. The 7-Eleven that is right there on Route 1, just, you know, just a hair north of, you know, across from the Acquahia Town Center, they're 24 hours. The 7-Eleven on the opposite side of the Acquahia, of Acquahia Harbor is also 24 hours. So we're just trying to respectfully request, if, if that doesn't create too much consternation, that we could have the extra hour to be competitive with the market.
We have a question from Ms. Mauer.
Yes?
What are the hours of all the other, McDonald's you said is 24 hours, the KFC?
Correct. The KFC is staggered hours. I think their peak's Friday and Saturdays until 11:00.
Okay.
And the, the rest of it's till 10:00. I actually pulled it up here on my phone. But the KFC is open until 11:00 on Friday and Saturday and 10:00 AM. And then,
And the restaurant?
The restaurant is open until midnight, I think, Friday and Saturday and then 11:00.
Mix is, mix is open past?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Correct. Mix is open until,
Until like 2:00 AM?
Till 2:00 AM.
So the surrounding, that answers the question. The surrounding?
It's, to be honest, it is consistent with the other, with the other restaurant uses and the retail uses in the area.
Mr. Snellings?
Yes, sir.
I guess my question is why are you waiting until now to ask for that? Why didn't you ask for that through the planning commission?
We did ask, we did ask for that for the planning commission.
That's approved in this. Is that correct, Mr. Harvey?
I guess they asked and they didn't get what they wanted from the planning commission. So they're asking us now to give us those three?
We did ask, we did ask the planning commission.
Is there a reason that the planning commission said no?
Mr. Snellings, there was a lot of debate at the planning commission level between the applicant and the commission and amongst the commissioners as far as what was the appropriate hours. This resolution reflects the planning commission's recommendation.
Okay. This doesn't affect a public hearing, does it?
No, Mr. Snellings, it's not.
Okay. All right, you may continue.
Other than that, happy to address any comments from the, Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry. There is one more thing. Again, in light of the, with the hours of operation, they were also wondering, again, if to be consistent with the other, for the condition number eight, again, we had a pretty healthy discussion on delivery hours. If we could have, it's currently 12:00 AM to 7:00 AM, if it could be 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM. The delivery hours would be restricted from 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM, so we'd be requesting two more hours earlier. But the facility would be open at, we are, the facility is already open at 5:00 AM.
You mean 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM?
5:00 AM to 12:00 AM?
You're not 12, not 12:00 AM to 5:00 AM. That would be right in the middle of the night.
That's where I'm restrict, okay, gotcha. That's where we are restricting. So you can't, exactly, we're saying the same thing, but yeah.
All right. So you want to add two more? You want to be able to take deliveries earlier in the morning?
Basically when the store, when, when the facility would be open.
Understood.
And I think short of that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have or address any?
We'll probably get back to you after, after the public hearing.
Okay.
All right. Let me go ahead and open a public hearing on this. Who would like to address the board on the possibility that the Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks at Acquahia Town Center?
Ruth Carloni, 300 Mount Olive Road. This is about the third meeting I've had today and I'm sorry. Okay. This is ludicrous that they're wanting a third drive-through. I can see a restaurant, something decent, something nice to take family out to and special occasions, but there's no need for a third drive-through. Now, I don't know if you've ever been shopping someplace near McDonald's or any other drive-through. The speakers, you can hear them. I mean, it carries, one would carry, did I say something humorous or? Anyway, according to your PT&amp;D, the development or redevelopment, it's supposed to be pedestrian-friendly. Now, they're right next door to where this is going to be. I shouldn't even be standing here. You should have, the planning commission should have denied it and say, if you want to have something, then having a restaurant. It is consistent with the uses, having someplace to eat. But anyway, a PT&amp;D is pedestrian. Okay, now you do have KFC and you have McDonald's with their drive-throughs. Now, another thing, what's bothersome is this one statement here on page four about the conditions. For this reason, there's no conditions requiring blah, blah, blah. This is bothersome. Then it's, I just feel sorry for the people that are working, the commuters that are staying in those apartments and have children. And you know there's children there. And these hours, the 5:00 AM, that's again ludicrous to have 5:00 AM. Also, the, the lighting too. The cars, when they stack up, you know, when they're taking off in the morning to get coffee or whatever, they're lined up. The cars, there's cars, noise from the cars and et cetera. Anyway, the hours of operation shouldn't be. The comprehensive plan also recommends that drive-through uses adjacent to residential development should be limited. Now, don't you think having a third drive-through is a little pushing past that limit? We, you know, I talked with some other people this evening about the drive-through and they feel the same way that to have a decent restaurant, like we don't have on 17, to have a decent restaurant to, you know, entertain and have for occasions. Anyway, just, I would love to have you all,
Thank you, Mrs. Carloni.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I was getting so carried away.
Appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
Who else would like to speak to the board on this issue? Please come up.
All right. Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Dan Scolaro. I'm a resident of 3713 Acquahia Drive here in the Acquahia precinct. I want to state upfront about this issue that I'm opposed to this conditional use permit for this property. As a resident of Acquahia District, this town center development has been going on quite a long time. It's very near and dear to me. I believe I speak for many residents of whom we just heard one of the same mind. As we continue to live here, we have high hopes of this town center, that it would be a welcome member of our community. A central place where members of our community can meet up, where parents can get their weekly shopping done, perhaps grab a meal or a beverage, generally hang out with one another. And an important part of this is where our kids can play, walk around, wander, not necessarily be completely attended. A safe place with less cars. A community town center is what we had hoped for. So I came here tonight to put forth the idea that a drive-through establishment such as this flies flat in the face of what residents and the surrounding community were looking for when we bought into a town center. Okay? She is absolutely right. We have enough drive-throughs. Okay? I'm no marketing wizard, but I'll play one tonight at the board's superboozzer. Try making a cafe where people can hang out and sit outside. We spend enough time in our cars, ladies and gentlemen. We do not need to be locked in to, to drive home from our jobs, to drive around in a circle, to pick up a beverage, to drive home to our kids. You know, I, I can see where that could be helpful if you're a mom and you have two or three kids in the car. That could be a good thing. I see that. But if you do this now, you're setting a precedent for all the development to follow, that this is acceptable. And it's not. You have the ability to make a change here. This town center is supposed to be a cut above, something different. Please do not make it the same as what we already have time and time again. So I respectfully request of the board to oppose this conditional use permit. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Would anyone else like to address the board on this issue? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing and bring this back for rebuttal from the applicant.
Members of the board, running down through the, we offer the following regarding the, the comments that were generated by the citizens. Regarding a sit-down establishment, the landmass doesn't support a sit-down facility such as a Mexican restaurant or something like that. Parking requirements for a fast food casual sit-down restaurant are, are pretty stiff. And fitting a restaurant of any sort of size, which is probably 5,000 square feet with parking and loading spaces and so on and so forth, et cetera, would be quite challenging on, on that, on that piece of property. So we feel like we are putting forth the, the best sort of project or product that would fit on a parcel of that size, which is, I believe, right around seven tenths of an acre. Additional comments from the citizens were pedestrian-friendly. Could I have the GDP, please? The current GDP, sorry, Jeff, how do I erase everything on this?
How about you use yellow?
All right, good. I'm not the only person. All right, good. There we go. All right, cool. All right. So let me, let me try green here. So regarding pedestrians, that was actually a comment that was made during staff review. And as you can see on the GDP, we are showing pedestrian facilities there, pedestrian facilities there, crosswalk with pedestrian facilities there, pedestrian facility with a crosswalk here, getting us to the proposed bus stop by others.
Stars, these little black squares that are next to the restaurant, there's like five of them?
I, I was going to address that.
Ah, please.
If, if you give me one sec, I'll just go straight to that now. The other citizen's concern was, could we discuss, you know, more of a town center sort of friendly atmosphere? The applicant is showing here on the GDP that, as Mr. Millday so astutely pointed out, the five individual circles there, we are proposing outdoor seating. Again, with a proposed Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, I mean, that is, that is part of what they want. They, they do want people to sit down and hang out. That's why every Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts that I've ever been to has free Wi-Fi. They, they want the collection of everybody to sit there and hang out, generally because that means you eat and drink more of their products. But, but so, we, we are actually proposing a cafe with, with outdoor seating, or at least that's what we're trying to attract. So the last two things that I think that were, that were addressed were, were the loudspeaker. We don't disagree with the citizens on that. We've made every effort. That's why we've situated the, we actually have a specific condition regarding to the direction of which the loudspeaker can be and that we only can have one. So it's really difficult to have a drive-through facility without a microphone. We're doing everything we can to limit the exposure to the, to the residential facilities, the residential structures. And then, I believe, lastly, again, the hours of operation. A slight rebuttal to, to, again, to citizens' request. I mean, I think when you're moving into a town center type of facility that has a mix in a McDonald's and a mix of commercial and retail uses, I think you're somewhat buying into the fact that you're going to have extended hours of operations. I mean, nobody's expecting you to be going wild at 3:00 AM in the morning. But, but I think you're sorely mistaken if you move into a facility like this and think that everything's going to be dead quiet at 10:00 PM. So we feel that we are being consistent with the, with the proposed uses and the existing uses that are there. And unless there are any other questions at this time?
Any questions of the applicant? Okay. Thank you for the rebuttal.
Mm-hmm.
All right. With that, this is in my district. Let me get this going. I'll make a motion.
Close public hearing.
Excuse me?
Close public.
I closed the public hearing before he gave his rebuttal. Am I not supposed to?
Supposed to do it after.
Am I making the, it's important to do it after the rebuttal, not before the rebuttal?
So it's my district, so I'm going to make the motion, just to get the discussion going about, I know there's some hours, questions about the hours of deliveries and hours of operations, but I'm going to make the motion that we concede on both points with the hours of operation and the hours of delivery, to see if I can get a discussion started.
Second.
With a second. All right. So how do you guys feel about the hours of operation? Bob, and then Ms. Mauer.
So the planning commission was, I think, trying to find a middle ground between the 24-hour kind of things that were there and recognizing that the apartments kind of were thrown on us, and we didn't really have a choice with that, recognizing that there were apartments there. And several of them thought midnight was probably a good compromise. That's not really where it ended, but there was some support for midnight, so I would be in favor of that. You know, a town center kind of has a hustle and bustle to it. I think the applicant's probably correct about that. If there's one thing I've learned, it's that the board doesn't have the authority to go pick a cafe. I mean, many of us would love to force something like that, but we just, we don't have that type of authority. And how those things happen is the private sector comes in, and they have to find something that will turn a profit while providing a service to the citizens. And we ate near there today, and we walked around, and this is a very constrained parcel. I think the choice is either spur some sort of development on the parcel, which is in front of us, or continue to look at a dirt, weed-filled eyesore. So I think if those are the two choices, which I believe they are, it's been a long time that that lot's been sitting there with no ideas, so I tend to be in favor of it.
Ms. Mauer.
I'm going to agree with my colleagues on that. I read through the planning commission minutes, and one of the things I want to point out is only five members of the planning commission were actually at that meeting. And so as they debated back and forth and tried to settle on a time, coming back off of the 24 hours, I think that they settled on the wrong time for that particular area. So I'm going to support this motion as Mr. Milde has presented it.
Ms. Sellers.
I'll be supporting this as well. Talk about the drive-throughs, but let's go back to when there was a Dairy Queen there. And people in, well, there was a Dairy Queen on the property and within the bigger development, and people do miss that Dairy Queen. You know, if you want a Dairy Queen with a drive-through, you drive to Massaponix. And people do talk about that, and they do, Dairy Queen's kind of a staple in a lot of neighborhoods, whatever you want to say about it. So I do like that we're doing something there. The other thing that I like is that you're trying to do it without coming to us and asking for money. We have put a lot of money into that site, and the fact that you guys are coming and trying to do something without us having to consider a tax incentive is, thank you. So I will be supporting this.
Yeah, I guess, and I know that we can't dictate what's on that site, but I can see the little, I call it the mini Starbucks down on Route 17. It's a mini, micro mini, but I could see it on that site very easily. But I'm going to support it just because it's a very small piece of land. Not crazy about the drive-through, but I think it will serve the constituents in that area. Thank you.
All right. And Mr. Cavalier, you want to say something before I do?
Sure. You know, keep in mind that this is separate from the ownership who bought the commercial part of the town center. This is an out parcel, doesn't belong to the Mosaic Corporation that's developing the rest of it. And the apartments were developed by another entity altogether, too. So this is one of the out parcels that you see, like the McDonald's, like Mix, like Kentucky Fried Chicken, like El Gran Charo and McDonald's and all those in the bank. So, you know, these things are market-driven, and, you know, this is probably the best we're going to do for this site, regardless of the drive-through or not. Drive-through doesn't bother me, to tell you the truth. I think early mornings when people are going to work, they don't get out of their car so that, you know, they need that. And I also think that this is a blighted shopping center, and this is a redevelopment. We got criticized for having blight in the county, and now we're improving it and still being criticized as not the right thing to do. So with some people, you can never satisfy. But in this case, I think we're making the right choice.
Thank you, Mr. Cavalier. And I think it's fair to say that the developers, and I know, because I've been involved this whole time, trying to get something done on the Quahia Town Center, the developers of the apartments knew, they know that parcel is there, they know that it potentially always existed for a facility like this. So it should come as no surprise to the owners. And frankly, they're not, the leasing hasn't, they're not filled up yet there, so obviously people can make a choice whether or not they want to live next to a facility like that, if they did some research or if it gets built. But those are rentals, so people aren't stuck there, not going to buy a home and be surprised that you have a drive-through next to your, near to your bedroom window or whatever windows face that. This is absolutely, it would be crazy to say no to something, to this application. We've had such, we've tried so hard to generate interest in a Quahia Town Center. We've had so many stumbling blocks, and this is one of the more exciting applications. As usual, at this point, I'm more skeptical that it will, you know, we've been given such, so many delays and setbacks on a Quahia Town Center that my fear isn't, that it won't be a good establishment, and my fear is that you won't be able to find an end user. So I would do anything, we will do anything we can to help facilitate redevelopment of the Quahia Town Center. I'm pretty sure that I can speak for a lot of residents in Aquia Harbor who would rather see this than wait another 12 years for, what was there on that lot was a goodwill, and that was there, that kind of was a temporary facility that replaced the pizza station. You know, it's had some other strange things on it. This is quite an improvement over either one of those also. So I'm happy to support this, and I'm happy to hear that my board does, too. With that, I'll ask you to cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you for your time and investment in our county. And I believe with that, we are out of items, and the meeting is adjourned.